Good evening, and welcome to Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty four. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Will you please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome, welcome tonight. We got a busy agenda, so we're gonna get going right away. We call a roll, please.
So we're Hatfield here, Councilmember Hubbard here, Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Grau, Mayor Winchell.
All right, we'll move on to item four, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Hatfield, to approve the agenda discussion. Hearing that all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Next, we move on to visitor presentation. This is an opportunity for any resident to come forward and address the council. No action is taken, and we limit all presentations to five minutes. And with that, is there anyone here that wishes, apparently there is. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak other than agenda items? We need name and addresses, please.
Correct. John Siegfried, one one zero six nine six, Village Road, number one oh five, Chaska. And I wanted to just check quickly on this Boltman link. Downtown landscaping and irrigation project. I just happened to watch the meeting from last week, your last meeting, and then also I just looked at the agenda item and it just seems like that particular contract had such a wide variation from low to high. And I know it said that the engineer gave an estimate and the winning bidder, who you probably are gonna award the contract to tonight, you know, it was like four hundred thousand less than what the top bidder was and maybe three hundred thousand less than than what the engineer calculated. So that's the information there, and I'm just wondering if there is a contingency fund and or percentage and or some technique for handling change orders, because I assume that there's gonna be a lot of that with that low bid that much variation between high and low.
Okay, I thought in the landscaping, correct?
Well, it's on your agenda, I think, for approval tonight. It's called twenty twenty four downtown landscaping and irrigation bid results. So I've got that copy. So anyway, I know the Mr. Mayor and the council, you're quite interesting, interested in seeing the vitality of downtown Chaska remain as it is and hopefully improve that economic health as we go forward with these two construction projects, namely Highway forty one and then the last parking lot that's currently being worked on. And I'm just wondering if much thought has been given to the dilemma that some of those businesses are are under some of the dilemmas that they're trying to work through, and that has to do with parking. Of course, the parking is effectively destroyed by either construction, the parking lot and or construction vehicles taking up the best spaces right at the corner of Third and Highway forty one. And I know that project is going to take a while to complete, especially the parking lot. So consequently, I'm wondering if we can, and this has been looked at, of course, by the Assistant Administrator and there's been all kinds of direction, from all directions, trying to, trying to solve that issue, and as to date, there's no real solution. Contractors and construction people, they think that as long as the building at two ten Chestnut is being rented by Mindot and others, that they have the right to park anywhere they want, and it doesn't seem like kind questions or kind attempts to verbally get the contractors and construction workers to park somewhere else other than right at the prime spots for two businesses, namely La Hermosa and Revive Nutrition. So I'm property owner right there in the corner, so I have a interest in seeing these businesses get a bit of slack, you know, or some kind of input from the city to loosen up that parking that's minimal. And I know you did provide some financial assistance to the wine shop because they were completely closed down when work was there last year, and I would think this council should consider some kind of financial assistance for those two businesses, businesses I mentioned, La Hermosa and Revive Nutrition. I think that would be a reasonable issue to look into. So I know all this is gonna go away, all the parking issues are gonna go away once the project is done, but really no progress has been made or behavior hasn't been modified enough where these people are just are coming to work there, and so they wanna work, walk as little as possible to get to their business, just like any retail or commercial customer wants to do also. So there is some definite disturbance on their traffic flow, no doubt about that, and I know all these problems will go away when the parking lot is completed, so we need some help for a couple of months at least if we're still looking at a July fifteenth end date for that parking lot completion. So there you have it. Thank you.
You can look into that parking. Okay, thanks, John. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on a visitor presentation on not an agenda item? All right, with that.
Just have a brief comment. I emailed all of you some of the comments about item eight.
I need a name and an address, please.
My name is Fred Koyvenaki, two seven six Jasper Circle North, and I did email all of you some comments that I had about the development. I hope you all read it, and basically that's what I'm here to talk about.
That's an agenda item that we're gonna talk about down the line?
I just have one point to make, and that is, this is infrastructure, it's a unique kind of infrastructure, because you're completing a circle that the north and south point part of it are already there. So I think it is important that whatever the development is, that it be consistent with the lot size, at least compatible with the lot size that already exists there. That's my only point.
Okay, thank you. But we, that will be a discussion as we get into that agenda item. Thank you. All right, anyone else under visitor presentation not on an agenda item? All right, with that, we'll move on to item six, approving previous meeting minutes, and that is from five, six of two thousand and twenty four. Are there corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
What's under approve meeting minutes?
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grau, discussion. Hearing that all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion carries. All right, move on. Items seven, consent. These are all items that we need we need approval on, not necessarily a conversation, but any and all can be pulled or talked about at this point. So with that, is there anyone that has a conversation regarding any of the consent agenda items?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to mention that I drove through past the Habitat for Humanity homes this morning and been keeping an eye on as they went up, and it, they just look really nice. There were kids playing in the cul-de-sac, and it was just kind of awesome to see, and they fit in really well. There, I know there were concerns about the houses and how they'd fit in that space, but they look really nice there. So thank you for Habitat, thank you to Habitat for Humanity, and lots of people volunteered at those homes, and just really nice to have in Chaska and have something affordable for people. So nice to see that done and nice to kind of close it out.
Anyone else?
Well, I think, just curious, you know, the gentleman about the question on the bids and the variety of the costs, I guess the question just be, you know, any indication of, you know, it looks big. I think typically we do see some pretty big spreads of numbers. It depends on who sometimes wants the business, and sometimes people bid, but they don't want the business because maybe they can't handle it. So just curious on what your thoughts are, what the finance teams with that bid came back, what that was.
Actually, the concern usually comes more from engineering about the capabilities of the contractors to be able to do those jobs, and when we see the type of spread come in, we do get concerned. One of the challenges is, is we don't have a whole lot of leeway in being able to reject bids. So what we do is we sit down and meet with the contractor before we make that recommendation at a council to sort of get a sense of how are they gonna approach the project. So engineering team, public works team, did have a meeting with this contractor last week. And one thing that was pretty clear is that they're gonna work pretty fast. They're bringing in a lot of people to really sort of come through and deal with, you know, a big portion of the projects all at once and stuff. So it's not gonna be just like a crew here and then moving up. It's gonna be a big group of people that come in and do it in a shorter amount of time. So so I think, so I, I think it's always a legitimate concern when we see that big a spread. But I, I don't think there's anything that we found that would say we don't think you're qualified to do it.
I was just gonna say, I think that we've noticed more of these big spreads in bidding projects for the simple reason are there are people that, right now, when we might need it done, they might not be able to, so they bid it really high with the intent of, well, if they get it, they're early, and where the next person might be in between jobs and has that ability to do it now. We've seen a lot of them that have unbelievable splits in them, and just more and more of that since with, with the workforce shortage and things like that. So we're seeing more and more of that happening. And that's all we can really do is we can sit down and bet that person that.
And, you know, we have bid bonds, and we do all that, you know, sort of surety type of work with that, and some contractors you have to really handhold, and, and some, you can give them a lot more leeway. So so that's, that's why it concerns engineering and public works the most is because it ends up being, how much do they have to monitor these people as they're going about doing their business?
Two questions. One is, the, one is, have we worked with this particular contract before? And then the other question is, what are the remediations available to us should they not perform? Or, you know, not perform to this bid level?
Well, I think that's probably a better question for you to answer than me. Normally, there would be options available. You could bring mediation, or you, there'd be usually some type of of out of court settlement option for, like, an arbitration or mediation, if it were to go that far, usually there's a bid bond or a performance bond, that's, or a payment bond that will accompany these, and so there would be options to move against the bond and have the bond surety complete the project if the initial contractor didn't, or to pay their subcontractors if they didn't. So there are multiple redundant layers of recourse that the city has, and again, the.
And we've had to do it before. I mean, the biggest project, the, one of the biggest projects we ever did was our water treatment plan. And it was sixteen and a half million dollars, and the contractor went belly up right in the middle of the process. And what we had to do on that is we had to use our performance bond, and we ended up having to work directly with a performance bond company to go out and hire our own contract subcontractors, and then pay them from the proceeds of the performance bond to complete the work. So it happens, but that's why you put those things in place.
Thank you.
Anyone else question consent? Entertainer motion to approve consent. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor, by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Item eight, action items. We are looking at eight A, which is motion to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty four dash fifty, approving the concept plan for Jasper Circle.
Mayor Councilmember, this is an item coming out of the planning commission. It is a concept plan phase for housing that's being proposed on a vacant lot. Let's see, at the end of Jasper Circle, adjacent to Highway forty one, and basically across Highway forty one from Middle School West. I believe Ashley is going to be making the presentation on this. One thing that you'll see as she goes through her presentation is that the planning commission did recommend approval of the concept plan, but put quite a few conditions in the, the approval to be considered as it moves forward through the process. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you, Matt. Tonight is a concept plan brought to you by Todd Owen on behalf of Land and Resource Consulting. It's for the Jasper's. It's for.
There we go, it's better.
I got that really close.
All right, it sounds worse for me, but it's better for you. The site is located west of Lock Dania and Highway forty one. It's also generally in the northwest quadrant of the Inglewood Boulevard and Highway forty one intersection. Tonight, we're in the concept planning phase. As the council is aware, this is the first of the three-step review process. Plans in this phase are generally very general, and they don't contain that high level of detail that the plans develop as it moves through the process. The intent of this phase is really to identify minor issues that should be resolved as that project moves forward. The site is just under five acres in size. The highest point of the site is in the northeast corner. I don't have a mouse. And there is a secondary high point just itself of the site. Generally, from these high points, the site does slow downwards to the lowest point in the northwest quadrant. A tree inventory has not yet been completed for the site, but generally, as you can see from the area on the screen before you, the trees are predominantly surrounding the existing home and putting site. The council plan is contemplating pulling access from Jasper Circle North and Jasper Circle South and completing it in order to provide access to sixteen new single-family lots. Those lots that range in size from roughly six thousand upwards to sixteen thousand square feet in size, with lot width ranging from fifteen up to eighty seven. A small remaining outlot is proposing a large west corner of the site, as well as the block for a future provided for to provide access for properties to the loan. The developer is anticipating single homes ranging in size from two hundred and three thousand square feet via mixed-use single and two-story homes with two to three car garages with price points targeted to start at five hundred and fifty thousand. As required part of the process, the applicant disseminated ghost plant from the elderly properties that those is that a tool that the city needs to compensate access to properties to ensure that they don't become the only one. It's a way for, it doesn't guarantee future approvals, but it's a way for staff to evaluate location of future streets or future street connections, as well as infrastructure connections. It's important to note that they're not included as part of the approval, as part of this process, but again, they are a tool that we can use and evaluate. In this case, the concept plan is contemplating twelve additional lots on those two northerly properties, and that was used to inform the location of the future live way extension of the newly constructed street. There were roughly fifty people that attended a neighborhood meeting held by the developer back in December. At that time, there was a seventeen lot plot shown. The neighbors generally inquired and commented about housing types and price points, lot types and sizes, noise mitigation, and traffic access on the Highway forty one. They also asked questions about stormwater and drainage. They requested an increased buffer in the southwest corner of the site. And then they also asked about construction timing and development of those future northern properties. There were a number of written feedback that were submitted as part of the planning mission packet, and again, included in your packet for this evening. Many of those comments provided context on density and lot configurations. They expressed concern related to increased traffic and access, and requested further consideration for integration into the existing neighborhood. So moving into the analysis portion of my presentation this evening, the property is currently zoned out for open development district, which is a holding zone until a property is rezoned as part of the review process. If the project were to move forward beyond the concept plan this evening, it's anticipated that the property would be rezoned to PR to be so planned residential. The twenty forty comprehensive guide plan guides this property as low density, which has a density range of two to five units per net acre, and the proposed density of the concept plan before you this evening is three point three units per acre, so within, within that range. Development within the surrounding area began in nineteen seventy three, with the most recent development, how it had been run to the north of Willowood, second addition being approved by the city in the year two thousand. The adjacent properties, adjacent developments, rather, Willowood, Shomen Green to the west of the site, and the north rate first addition to the south. The lots on the concept plan before you this evening are smaller than the average lot sizes in both of those developments. Traffic generated from these hundred and twenty seven single-family residential homes within those developments are generate roughly twelve hundred vehicles with daily traffic volume. Those vehicles utilize the existing roadway network down to Angler Boulevard and then beyond. This generation has been evaluated as part of the upcoming Angler Boulevard reconstruction project, which is proposing the conversion of the White Oak intersection, or White Oak and Angler Boulevard intersection into a roundabout. This conversion will improve efficiencies and is forecasted to improve the already acceptable levels of service of that intersection up to the highest and best level of service at all times. It's anticipated, based on available data, that the concept plan with the sixteen lots and that traffic generated would add an additional hundred and fifty one trips to that local roadway network that could be accommodated within the existing and these roadway network post reconstruction. The ghost plat for the site and the two northerly properties was submitted at the time that the Willowood development was influenced by the city attack in nineteen ninety seven. Willowood was developed at a density of two units, so on the lower end of the comp plan guidance for low density residential. Lots within that development at the time were targeting price points of sale around two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a lot in excess of sixteen thousand square feet. The ghost plat contemplated eight lots for the Jasper site with lots ranging in size from twelve up to thirty five thousand square feet, and that figures to about one point six units per acre, so under that density range of the comp plan. It's important to note that the developer is targeting those price points of five hundred thousand with those smaller lots, and the development costs shown in the nineteen ninety seven plan would be substantially higher and would likely drive up the cost of those new homes and lots. To show that in a little bit different context, these are the developments that have been approved by the city within the last two years. You can see that generally correlating to those larger lots is a higher price point. Not necessarily always, you know, Carlson blocks, which will be coming before you this evening. They have lot sizes roughly just under a half acre. They're targeting price points of eight hundred thousand. Reserve at Autumn Woods was approved by the city in two thousand and twenty two, and those that development did have lots that wrapped down to fifty feet in width with roughly similar sized housing. Proposed setbacks are generally similar to other developments that have been approved within the city, the front yard setback. Uh, the front yard setback. Some neighbors, as part of the process, have expressed interest in having uh direct access on the Highway forty-one. Uh, city staffs continue to be engaged with MinDOT to see if that was an option, uh, ultimately, they've indicated that a permitted access of any kind, either full or partial, uh, would not be permitted. But they are open to continuing conversations uh to allow that existing driveway to be used for construction access until some point uh of this time. They've indicated that a noise wall would not have been required, what's the sound study? However, uh, but they did encourage a landscaping burn just to help with noise mitigation. Shortly before the distribution of the planning commission packet, uh, the applicant did submit some additional plans that showed additional landscaping along that western property line. It's a little bit hard to see here as cut in half, uh, but you can this for context, that stormwater pond is right here, not westerly property line uh cuts through this fashion, but additional landscaping is is intended to provide a greater buffer to that existing neighborhood. At the planning commission meeting uh back earlier this month, there were eight residents uh that spoke during the public hearing. Uh, generally, they expressed concerns related to density, particularly as it relates to the distance between the homes and just the overall number of lots. I apologize, this looks very small on the screen. Uh, they also expressed concern related to the house and lot sizes as they appear to be dissimilar to the existing neighborhood. There was a lot of concerns raised about traffic, uh, just as they relate to the one access in and out of the existing developments. There is delays already experienced at the White Oak and Angler Boulevard intersection and speed within the neighborhood as well as sightlines, especially at the White Oak or near that part of the area. There were concerns also raised about differentiation of the concept plan from the original ghost plat in nineteen ninety-seven. And then finally, a number of concerns related to the lack of continuity and integration into the existing neighborhood. The planning commission spent a lot of time uh on the application and discussing. Ultimately, uh, they had inquired about the store footage of the existing homes within the neighborhood. They asked several of the residents uh to share the size of their home just to provide some additional context. They confirmed that the local street network could accommodate that anticipated increase in traffic and that traffic data was used to inform that recommendation. They discussed those plots and just their implications and they asked questions about the those plot for those northerly properties. They spent time discussing the density in the comprehensive guide plan and as uh the city administrator mentioned, uh, they expressed significant concerns just to the number of lots, but they weren't able to come to a consensus about what the right number was. So they encouraged the applicant to explore uh existing setbacks within the neighborhood, particularly as they relate to front yard setbacks. And then consider sightlines into the new neighborhood. Also, supported adding a condition uh to work for the developer to work with the neighborhood representatives. And ultimately, in an eight-zero vote, uh, they did recommend it for all with that additional condition that was found uh in your report for this evening. Just suggesting or requiring rather, uh, the developer work with the neighborhood representative on the plan. Our new submissionary preliminary act signal. Well, since then, uh, several members have reached out uh to me and have expressed interest in participating in that process. And many of them look forward to that should the council give that condition. So with that, uh, I'll conclude this evening and I'll turn it back to you, mayor, for any question.
Questions? Questions?
No, I think at a concept level, I don't have any questions. I drove through the neighborhood today, both on Jasper Circle North and South to get a feel for the homes and I I do think it's important for the developer to kind of look at those houses around it, um, so they somewhat match. It's always hard when you put a new house next to houses that even have been there a few years, so, um. But from so far what we've seen, I don't have any questions or. Traffic is always hard, that's a hard thing. I hope that roundabout really helps once it goes in, getting in and out. Um, but I think that's, that's just a tough thing with forty-one being. They just don't want to be against us on big highways, makes sense, safety thing, but.
I guess maybe I have a question in regards to that. Uh, I know they did the traffic analysis. Did they consider the ghost plat? I know it's obviously, there's no development date on that ghost plat, but that's adding how many more homes? I forget, I think eight, oh, just eight more homes? Was that put into consideration or no?
Mayor and council member, the you're talking about for the county reconstruction project?
Or just the no traffic data that that they calculated for the the number of trips?
Yeah, so that that would be contemplated of the density for the comprehensive guide plan. And I spoke with the city engineer earlier today just about, you know, how that intersection and that traffic data as it relates to the reconstruction project happened and it certainly did take into consideration development of this site and those two northerly. He didn't know the exact number at the time, um, but it, he anticipated that it was calculated based on just the density range from the comp plan, which the concept plan fits within.
So is the ghost plat's density the same as the proposed density as it is now? Or is it a, is it a lower density?
Uh, mayor and council members, so the the ghost plat uh uplifted eight lots would be the best density of one point three. Oh, sorry, one point six units per area. Uh, the concept plan was sixteen lots, is that three point three?
Sorry, so I was referring, I was thinking about the ghost plat for the the connection to the north, the one that, um, that extension that would, the future one.
Mayor and council member, I don't have the exact, uh, I can run the calculation really quick, I don't have that.
Okay.
But I'll run it here.
Okay. Sounds good.
Well, so when we're talking this ghost plat, I I guess I'm still confused. Is that what was originally scheduled or is that for that little area that's going off?
Yes, to both.
Both.
There's a, there's the old ghost plat.
Okay.
Which is here, that's the eight, and then there's the northern section, that's for that future.
Mm-huh.
So there's two ghost plat, plats, excuse me.
Uh, mayor, maybe some clarification, so the ghost plat that you see on the screen before you right now, uh, was the ghost plat that was submitted in nineteen ninety-seven when Willowood, the development just to the west, was developed. This particular ghost plat was submitted with this concept plan contemplating uh those two northerly properties.
And that was what my question related to, was the traffic counts, the future traffic counts, was those, the twelve additional homes calculated into that or no?
Again, you know, the 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 exact number, um, I can't answer that.
They go on the.
It's the density range.
Yeah, they basically look at that range of density to say how how much is that going to generally uh create?
And so, just to uh, clarify that maybe again, the, so the development of those two northerly properties would have been figured into that intersection because it's anticipated that the access for those future lots would come through this development.
Sure, okay.
This cul-de-sac to the north there, that's just if the additional landowners sell down the road?
So mayor, I just want to clarify. The applicant is not putting anything forward for that northern portion, this is just sort of a it's not even a concept plan, right? It's a proof of concept showing that there's a way to get access back there, this is one way that maybe it could be split up at if, when, right, that time comes, um.
And and I get that, but I think it's important that we do talk about it today. Cause we'll be right back where we are down the road again and another infill neighborhood. The hardest thing in the world to work around is infills.
Yep. Cause I think the question where I was going was that if, if we look at like, let's say, this is like three point two for the the current, you know, proposal for the site that's listed below. If the, if the northern goat properties goat spot was at that same three point two density, how many lots would be in that? So what's the traffic or is it already at that? Um, the reason why is like, cause at this point you have like sixteen homes plus another twelve now as it's plotted, but if it's higher than that, let's say sixteen and fourteen, right? Well, you know, it's a pretty, you know, it's almost like now doubling your volume off of that end of the, the end of the street. Or, you know, it's just trying to get a sense of like what that's, what that actually, the practical implication for what that would be for the future development.
So is there a question in there, council member?
Well, I, just more of an explanation of why I'm looking for that particular, you know, density value to understand what would effectively be the maximum or what would be the equivalent number of lots if we use the same density in the northern properties.
I'm working on that, so if you want to circle back with me.
Okay, sounds good.
So just a question, uh, I'm assuming I'd answer, but I want to make sure I'm making the right assumptions. Based on the size of the element in the space, none of the ordinances are kicking for green space or park, cause it's all kind of taking part of the other neighborhood. Right? I mean, bigger neighborhoods typically like there's a park space dedication. We're not hitting any of those thresholds, that's why we're seeing none of that green space here, correct?
Correct, mayor and council members, and there there are some landscaping requirements, it's part of the subdivision, but there wouldn't be part of the dedication in all instances.
Yeah, the the neighborhood park is about a block and a half to two blocks just to the west of there.
I have comments, but I I know there's potentially people here that want to speak, so I'd like to hear them before. I can just think through.
Uh, and and I thought I read it, are they building a berm on the forty-one side and how high would that berm be?
Uh, the the plans that they have indicated and included as a condition of approval would be a landscape berm on lots uh three through nine. So those eastern, those lots along uh Highway forty-one, uh, the height of that berm is, we don't have those details yet as part of the concept plan, should the project move forward, we certainly uh would have that information for you.
Cause of, I just look at the tightness of that, well, how those, those are obviously the small lots, but they're really small.
Mm-hmm.
By the time you put a a berm there to be able to use as a true sound barrier and, um, sight barrier. And by the time you make it a mobile grade, that's taking up a lot of space there and I'm concerned that there's enough room there. I'm certainly not an engineer by any means, but, um, I don't know, doesn't look like much room. Uh, so you, you guys would rather have comments first?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, so here's what we're going to do now, I I know that there's a lot of folks here um, and we certainly want to hear everybody's comments, um. But if you come up here, first off, we're going to need your name and address and uh for our records. And then we ask if someone's already brought your thought up, it's really not necessary to bring it forward again. Uh, please keep everything civil and we'll, we'll get through this and, but we do want to hear everybody's comments. And uh, listen to your thoughts and uh we'll kind of go from there and obviously the council already said they got questions, but want to hear your comments uh first, so. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up and you guys can come on up, uh, but I was gonna say just name, address for our records, please.
Good evening, my name's Donell Hi, I live at three zero three Groves Drive. Um, I am not on that picture, but I am in the neighborhood. I would.
The North Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I would like to start by thanking the council for your time, to thank city staff for working with MinDOT on securing temporary construction access off of forty-one should the project eventually break ground. And to thank planning commission for adding a requirement to this proposal that the developer must continue to work with our neighborhood on a compromise. It was clear at the May eighth meeting that the developer felt they had sufficiently addressed resident concerns and were finished working with us. I, like my neighbors, am concerned about the proposed number of lots. The developer has argued for density as a way to keep aging adults in their home longer, as a way to keep homes affordable, notably for their own children, apparently. Um, and they often have pushed a self-centered narrative that existing residents will still have their own space and that our own lots won't change, um, as though this means we should not care about what they're building. This completely misses the point of how deeply Chaska residents value community and our own neighborhood. The only honest response we have been given regarding the proposed density is that it is an economics decision that they need more homes built to make the most of their investment. It is neither the neighborhood's fault nor the city's problem that the developer purchased unentitled land last June. Yes, they are trying to work out the financials, but this simply could have been a poor purchase on their part. I see little reason to accept this increase in density because of their lack of planning. Planning commission debated lot count at their May eighth meeting and residents gave different numbers to what they might find satisfactory. My answer is, show me a proposal that matches what was used in the Willowood development. Current PRD thirty-three lot setbacks including side yard, front yard widths, and I will have no further arguments. Our neighborhood should be completed, but it should be done with people in mind, not profits. Thank you for your.
That's. Anyone? Hello?
Hello, I'm Jill Randall. I didn't know about these previous meetings because apparently I don't live close enough to the development. However, it directly affects me, I've lived in my home at sixteen ninety-six White Oak Drive for over thirty-six years. Um, I was disappointed when the new development, Klingelhead's development was developed without a second access off of Bavaria because it's extremely dangerous to only have one entrance and one exit to a neighborhood. Um, and I live with it every day, everything. I look at this on paper, it really doesn't mean anything to me respectfully because until you are there, living there, um, I have had people race by my house. It's, I'm at the top of White Oak Drive, there's a curve there. I will have five young children living directly across the street from me. And when those people try to back out of their driveway, the hill is going up, there's a side curb, it's very difficult for them to even see the cars racing up the hill. People race up the hill on White Oak Drive, they race down the hill. My son's car was totaled, parked on the street. Uh, my mailbox was hit probably by a red pickup, judging by the level of the paint and the broken headlights they left on the sidewalk behind my mailbox. Um, I've had to run for my life in the wintertime, people speeding down on slippery roads, fishtailing. That's how people drive on White Oak Drive and it really concerns me that now we're going to add more traffic. And it sounds very vague regarding what could eventually be the total number of houses added to this area. There really should be a second e- exit and entryway, or there should be signs indicating slow. We have children living here, I mean, the spring, I've had wildlife killed in front of my house constantly. Uh, it's, it's really dangerous. And something needs to be done before a child's killed. So, everything looks great on paper, but when you live it, it's a totally different story and that's way too much traffic. Way too much, so, thank you, I really, um, really appreciate your time and your listening, but come, come and sit in front of my house sometime and watch the cars speed up and down the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, that's from the council.
Uh, so I I went over the weekend and I went looked around, um, looked at the proposed site. Infill projects are always really hard. Um, like you guys had mentioned, you're trying to match the tone, the environment of the existing homes that are around you. And I think a lot of times in certain circumstances, especially one with an infill project such as this. I think it's really important to do that just because it is kind of situated right there and. There are no other exit options. Unfortunately, that really is a MinDOT decision, you know, it's a safety thing along forty one there. Um, I would love to see a right in and a right out um come along that side of the road, but. It's just not going to happen. I just know that. So it's about being kind of strategic and planning well. Um. I don't know. I mean, my thoughts when I read the packet was that there was a large justification for the lot sizes of why they were. I personally feel like they're too small. Um, I think there are a lot of houses kind of crammed in there. Um, like the mayor had mentioned, I were. With the Birmingham, learning that tonight, that especially for houses five, six and seven on the. Concept plan here, I don't know what their yards would look like. Um. I don't know if a wall is better. I don't necessarily think it's a a a bad design. I think the loop is nice in the sense that um. It puts it, in my opinion, at least for right now, it puts an even distribution of traffic between the two existing neighborhood streets. I think that's really important. I learned that one. And so other neighborhoods in the community with with um adding on and infilling. Um. I'm I am curious, I and I know, like you had mentioned Nate, that we're not talking about the. Northerly guy, you know, ghost plat and kind of seeing, you know, what that is, but I, you know, I'm looking at that because it is important, I think, to think about. There's still an open space that could be infilled and what does that look like and what kind of impact does that have? On not just the neighbors such as yourself sitting in the crowd, but also the neighbors that are will be coming in as this gets developed. And so just making sure that that's well thought out and that's done well, just to kind of think. What could that look like? I think that's important to ask those questions. Um. I personally, you know, I know this is a concept plan and I I saw in the notes that the it looked like maybe the. Planning Commission had struggled a little bit. And that's why they added the contingency. I'm glad to see that stipulation or that condition put on there. I personally would like to see the lot sizes somewhat match the existing lot sizes that are in this neighborhood. I think that's really important as it it currently stands. Um. But those are, those are my my general thoughts, I guess, at this moment. I'll just I'll let other people speak, so.
If that's.
Um, yeah, you know, I look at it and the traffic, no one likes the traffic and I get that. Um, those are hard things to you get used to it and, you know, I I wish I could. I wish people would drive like adults everywhere in town, right? Um, but you can't politicize that, you can't, you can ordinance and enforce it, but even that's hard, so that's hard. But I look, when I look, you know, I the struggle here is I I the logic, if you're understanding the logic, if they're trying to get a more a lower price point. My struggle with it is that price point fluctuation can fluctuate so greatly. I mean, I'm looking because it's curious, because I was obviously. A part of those conversations, but like if I look at like Exconce Woods, that's listed here. Point two is your average size, which is comparable to point one nine. You know, the price point targeted was six hundred fifty thousand plus. And I know for a fact that those houses that I stared at my backyard right now are million dollar houses, right, being built. So like even there, that price point shifted so much in that space. So, you know, the worry, the fear is if you say, okay, like, let's keep lot sizes that way at a lower price point. The market's gonna dictate that price point. And so, you know, when they're selling and it's seven hundred fifteen, eight hundred thousand, and I was sold on a bill of rights and saying that, oh, we keep these small. Now, I get it. Obviously, if you make the lot size bigger, that's gonna come to, I I get that. Um, but I do, you know, I do struggle similar to to customer uh Hopper's comments about. Matching that's that that look and feel. Um, the berm is really questionable. Uh, I echo the mayor's comments on that because, you know, and I wanna be very. Planful on the view because forty one's a busy road. Right now, it's actually a very picturesque view into that neighborhood because you have that open space. Um, clearly that won't be the case with the berm, right? And you can landscape it. Um, you know, so I I question that a little bit and again, I'm only reading comments. And so I don't, I I'm only gonna take it as is and, you know, I don't know if it was fairly said or not said about small yards. People don't want want smaller as a big yards. You know, regardless, my opinion is that I chose as a growing family of building a house. Uh, I chose my location compared to something maybe across the street. Because it had a bigger lot space, because it had a yard space and my kids love playing in the yard. Um, you know, so I think there is still huge value in in spaces of acreage in in playing. Um, you know, I think, you know, I know several people who live in that neighborhood now, uh, mourned tonight. Um. And I think, you know, similarly following, you have a wide variety of interests. You have growing families, established families. You know, those with kids have moved out and and have that space. So again, I I do think there's value in yard and and in acreage space. Uh, as much as, you know, trying to find time to mow it and all that stuff that comes into play, but you you do it, you figure it out because. You know, you wanna play catch in the backyard or you kick a ball or throw a ball or play set or. Um, pickleball if you wanna do it later in life, I don't know. Um, so that's my reaction too. I I just, I worry a little bit about we're trying to show and I get it, like I fully, I I say this all the time. And actually I've had numerous conversations with an individual specifically that I coach with that lives in that neighborhood. I said, I fully expect that every developer is going to look at. How many spaces can, how many lots could fit? That's their job that, you know, I I I'm a realist to know that they buy land to. Build and make a profit. I I get that. Um, I think typically what we've seen up here is that comes in a concept plan. We give feedback and there's adjustments and a lot of developers that continue to have that long-term relationship with the city in the city. Listen and adapt. So I'm hopeful, right? I I, you know, I until proven differently, I I'm hopeful and I'm a glass half full that. Uh, the developer will hear that and look at that kind of feel, because again, I think the the obvious ones that are really a challenger, the ones that are gonna be a butt to. The forty one, um, you know, because I, again, I think you're you're there's some challenges there with a with a berm. Um, but again, I I just expressed concerns with the the shrinkage of that lot size in particularly, it's small in the city regardless. For that um in that area, but then if you compare it to the lots in that space. Um, I mean, there's some pretty, like I said, very nice, large lots in that space and um. It's a visible space and so I I echo those comments and I, you know, again, I I I can't sit up here and go, the right number is ten. Or the right number is this. Um, and I don't think it's eight. I will also say that, right? The original, the original number was eight. I think economics have changed, right? I think the goal was two hundred and fifty. I smiled at that, that the the price point was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When those that area was first built, because that that's not the economics that we live in. So it's probably not eight, but doubling it seems aggressive is my. And again, I'd love to be able to say the number is this. I don't have that, but.
I, you know, I think it's entirely appropriate in the concept plan phase to indicate that, uh. You know, direct staff and developer to go back and look at, um. densities that better match, you know, they may not exactly match, uh, but better match the. Uh, the uh development that surrounds, um. I mean, that that's, to me, that's the key of a concept plan is that we're at that stage where we can provide that type of feedback. And have the council provide that type of feedback and then it becomes real direction to the uh developer about. Okay, the meat and potatoes of of the planning process is in the preliminary phase. And, you know, when when you come back for preliminary phase, if you want to be successful. You have to take into consideration those comments that are made uh during the concept plan.
And I fully recognize in a in a concept plan, you're not figuring out the width, the berm and all that type of stuff and. Figure that out, because again, I I think. Um, you know, to echo mayor's mayor's comment, I'm not an engineer, but you look at how close in that berms and berms width by height.
Think about. Testing, the thing about what we the work session that we had just went through and think about what they had said about natural landscape buffering. It takes a lot.
It does, yep. You know, and and I certainly wouldn't so really like to see a wall there either, because.
I'm not sure if it's noise or visual.
Yeah.
I I, that's why I I put it out there, you know. Sure, it's noise, but I think it might be partially visual.
I think it would be partial, I think, yeah, I agree.
So, those are my thoughts. I mean, again, I like, I understand and fills me difficult. I understand both sides of. Of it's not necessarily people versus profits. I understand that comment, but. There is a financial piece to it, but there's a balance and that's, I think that's the the ask is looking for that balance of of trying to figure out where it is appropriate. Um, to kind of match that over that the look and feel, because you're right, everyone's gonna drive through that area. To get to this area and so it's not like you're not gonna notice the difference, right? It's gonna be very obvious and. Um, I think there's a strong demand for space of in yard still today.
Thank you. Who else?
Yeah, I'll go. So, you know, fundamentally, I mean, we talk about like traffic, we talk about. You know, like number of people around there, right? It's the ultimately the issue is really density, right? And or to the issue of density is that we have an interesting sort of syndrome, right? Because the, you know, low, low density now is like two to five units per acre, right, per net acre. And yet the current resident, current neighborhood is built at like one point eight, so it's like just below what would normally be built under today's standard. But then the developer's looking at something, you know, towards above the median of what the current standard is. So it effectively almost doubles what the that current net density is. And, you know, when you look at neighborhoods, you want something that's consistent. You drive through the neighborhood, you're looking at similar sized houses and, you know, kind of like cadence when you're kind of. Go through there that, you know, these all kind of feel like maybe not they're built the same time, but called built. To have a certain cohesive look, a certain feel, but this is the same neighborhood. Now, taking that compounded with sort of the economic realities of today too, right? Is that new builds are like awfully expensive, right? Even a entry level starter home is expensive, so from a build perspective. You know, developers looking at a perspective of, well, I could build a smaller house for a lower entry point, but that means that. You know, it's gotta be a smaller piece of dirt because that's the investment. But in order to reduce density, that means you have to raise it to higher and higher price points. So the interesting balance here is gonna be figuring out how to reduce density. To something that's more amenable to the neighbors, right? And at the same time, making sure that there's, you know, appropriate margin for the developer, otherwise it's just not gonna happen. But also at the same time, it's also finding the right price point for the houses are gonna be there, right? Because if you said, well, let's make it one point eight, even though it's below what the standard is today. Those homes might be, you know, if you're looking at some homes that are comparable sized lots, you know, in other parts of Chaska. They're like pushing a million or over a million dollars. And that suddenly creates a very different disparity of like, great, now we got people who have million dollar plus homes like next door to you, right? And it creates a very different dynamic in terms of who your neighbors are, right? And that's something they also consider too in terms of. What we're asking for, because sometimes what we what we believe we want is something that we know is important to us. But we also sometimes have unforeseen consequences too, and it's important to kind of keep those things in mind as we talk through this. I'm not suggesting you go one way or another, but it's just a the reality is something we need to also take into account. But that said, density definitely to my mind needs to be lowered and shifted down, so it's more cohesive with the neighborhood that's there. And then likewise, the the Birmingham is a concern too, because typically a like a berm or if you look at from a noise, like a foliage for noise, right? They're talking about, like, you you reduce like ten decibels for every hundred feet of trees, right? If you go like two hundred feet of trees to drop it twenty decibels, well, you're like halfway into the neighborhood and like, there's like three lots left, right? I mean, no one's gonna build for that unless there are a couple, like three, two million dollar homes there, right? And it's not zoned for that, uh, or it's not planned or guided for that. Um, likewise, berms, I and, you know, some of the, Ashley or Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, berms usually are like, you know, one foot high for every six feet. Run, right? So roughly speaking, that means if you want a three foot height, let's say a one foot high berm, which means you have. Six feet out to make it one side, that's the top and six feet down the other side, you have twelve feet wide to make a one foot tall berm. Well, you barely trip over that, right? If you want a three foot tall berm, right, you take that six feet multiplied by three is eighteen feet on one side, eighteen feet the other side. Right now, we have a thirty six five foot wide clearance, can't really build on your berm. So thirty six feet wide to make it shorter than the stios. Something considered too, right? I mean, that's just the mechanical piece of it. So when we look at like how Birmingham's constructed and how, you know, we look at sound mitigation and things like that. There's a lot of moving pieces to this because it all kind of comes out of this math that we have to look at. So but the guidance that I would, that I would be in favor of would be to. Work with, you know, work together, developer and the residents to to figure out what's the appropriate density that lowers that threshold. So that it works for everyone, while at the same time maintaining that cohesiveness of neighborhood and. But that finding that balance of the neighbors that you want to be neighbors with you, right? Um, it's it's not an easy balance because there's like all these different variables coming from different sides, but. Trying to find that balance is gonna be tough. I'm not gonna say it's easy. It's gonna take a while. But what I'll be asking, that I'll be looking for is from the, when this comes back again, which I'm sure it will. That I'm not gonna say yes on this until. The residents are okay with it. Does it have, you don't have to love it, but you have to be okay with it, right? And then and the developer is also okay with that. They don't have to love, they probably won't end up loving it for obvious reasons, but they'll be okay with it too. Because there's gonna be compromise, right? There's gonna be compromise on both sides, but I think the key thing here is that. To me, as a resident, I've been through this before. I've been in your shoes. And ultimately, the thing that's most important about going through this process is that. Even after the the developer leaves, you know, years pass, different people are in the council. You'll still be living in those homes. You'll still be dealing with the consequences of the decisions that are made today. I do not want to leave a legacy of decisions that leave you at something where you're angry at. The developer, this council, whoever, because it wasn't something that you were okay with. Because that's not fair to you and, you know, your your families. And so ultimately, to me, it's. What I wanna see is like everyone comes to the table and figure out how do we make something that's gonna be okay to everybody. And that's what, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, thank you.
I'll say something because I said something before y'all talked, I spoke, sorry. Um. I think I have a little bit different perspective. I live downtown. I'm gonna tell you right now, none of our houses look alike. It's awesome, but I will say like infills are really hard, right? Like you wanna have some semblance of, that it just doesn't look so out of place when you do have houses that are cohesive. Um, so I do think that's important. I think we've also seen successfully where I say this is concept. I think right now, okay, with the concept, we expect that in preliminary, they're gonna come back. And what we've seen is when we're like, that's too many houses, too many houses, too many slices. Uh, then they come back with less. We saw that downtown Chaska where we had an infill of. Five gigantic houses about around littler houses. It's four, they're still gigantic next to little houses, but it, there's four instead of five. And things like that. So I think the message here is less lots is is appealing. Um, let's move forward with that in preliminary. I think that's loud and clear from all of us. Um. But I also, as someone who lives in houses that don't all look the same. New houses are not ever gonna look the same as houses that have been there for a few years. How many years they've been there, so just have that expectation, because that's like a hard reality. Um, I have townhomes that are eighty years newer, maybe even maybe a hundred years newer behind my house. And it's okay, I live, I'm living, so just know that it's gonna look a little bit newer. Like it's not gonna be perfect. I always just like to, people get really attached to that, but I think it's important that we've said less. Lots would be good. Try and be cohesive with that expectation. It's not gonna be perfect.
Yeah, I was just going to comment, because I was just curious, because math is intriguing to me sometimes. Sorry, we list the, we list, we list the averages point one nine, um. But when you really look at the lot sizes, you know, Mayor, as we talked about, you look at those ones right on the berm, those are the small point one four, point one four. If, if you take out. The biggest lot, which is point three seven, you're down to like point one seven, like that, that number skews that pretty high quickly. And even if I take out the high and the low, because I was curious, like, okay, if I take out one of the lows, take the high, right? Simple math. It still gets, it gets it to point one eight. I mean, those, that point one four, those lots. Are pretty small. That's a pretty. And that's, and, and that could fit other places, but when you have just down the road bigger. Those worry me and that goes with the berm. I, I think you've heard that.
One, two to, not one, but two to three out. You know, two-ish out and get those bigger lot sizes and it.
But again, I, I get the, there's economics to it. I'm not going to be blind to that and, and understand that. Developers choose to develop for a reason. Um, but I was just curious, because like you have one pretty big lot in there, that point three seven and even a point three two. Um, but that, which pushes that average pretty quickly. And if you like, say, take the high one out, you drop it down to point seven, it's average pretty quickly.
I think it's worth noting too, I, I don't know if anybody else I know, drove through the neighborhood as a whole. Did do that on Sunday and even though, as you read in the concept paperwork, you know, the neighborhood's been added on to over the years. And, and you do see the, obviously the architectural differences as Councilmember Hatfield kind of alluded to. And just newer builds versus older homes. Um, you do see the differences there, but as far as the aesthetic of the neighborhood, it kind of all flowed. Pretty well, and I think that is just the consistency in the lots themselves, so.
Well. I, I'm, I'm a little curious when they say houses start at five fifty. Is that the small lots or is that the big lots? Is the developer here?
Mayor, yeah, I was just going to say that the developer is here if you wanted to invite him up.
You ought to come up. I, I, I do have that question to ask you. Just again, state your name and address if you would for our records.
Uh, Todd Olin, I'm with Landon Resource Consulting. I'm at fourteen two sixty twenty-third Ave North, Plymouth, Minnesota. Um. Please repeat the question again.
So, so in your, somewhere in one of the things I read that lots should start at five fifty. Is that the ones backed up to forty-one or is that the really giant lot? How, how are you?
Those are the smaller ones and the variation between large, smaller and bigger, we figured was five fifty to six fifty based on the existing configuration. But they're starting at five fifty, is that, and those are the smaller ones.
That is a small.
So from a square footage standpoint, we plan to build about the same square footage as, as on every other existing lot in the neighborhood. About twenty, two thousand to three thousand square feet.
It, it shrinks the yard, but the same size house. On a smaller yard, which again, I. I'm not saying that there's not a market for that, but it's also not fair to say that there isn't a market for bigger yards, right? So I think there's that balance piece of it, right? Too, so.
Thank you, Councilor, Mr. Mayor, um. Can I address a few of these items or, okay, uh, we'll start with that one and then, this is. Not all that un, or all that unique compared to other infill like you were saying, Council. Um. And that it's infill and the one thing that is somewhat unique about it is that. Um, no matter how many lots we have in here, the fixed costs are really the fixed costs. Uh, there's going to be a loop road there. Um, not only would it work better long-term for traffic. But it also is a great, uh, bidirectional access for fire access. So those road costs, the utility costs, um, the mass grading cost, pretty much storm sewer is. It's sized the way it's shown right now, uh, designed to your standard, but that wouldn't change a whole lot. Those costs are, are fixed. So that's what we're trying to play with is the lot size to keep the lots in a reasonable. Um, not only reasonable price point, but also compared to the other homes that are in there now. Because obviously those aren't selling for two fifty anymore. Um, so the opposite is true that, uh, and before I say all these things. I want to make sure you understand that we're committed to work for the neighbors. So what we were requesting it ultimately here tonight is that. That the conditional approval for concept be approved, but, um, that we work with the neighbors through your planning staff and. And get closer to a, to a compromise. Um, so, uh, with that being said. What the, the thought pattern of going into this was to try to match the, the economics of the whole area. Um, as you look through the neighborhood, the neighborhood includes more than just Jasper North and Jasper South. As you go north, um, on White Oak or south on White Oak and into those other little peninsula neighborhoods. The lot sizes do vary quite a bit. Um, there's one in particular that gets pretty close to the lot sizes that we have. And, um, that was the thought pattern behind it. The, the ability, you know, to build healthy neighborhoods with options. I'm not saying every homeowner that comes out and looks at these, if these were approved the way they are, would want this space and this home on this lot. But there are a lot of people that we find that live in the neighborhood and they're empty nesters and they don't want as much to maintain in the future. So they, they want to be able to live in the same neighborhood because that's where their fabric is. That's where they lived their whole lives. That's where they brought their kill, their children up. And there's an option for those, that, that type of living situation. That was really the, the, some of the thought behind it. Um, beyond that, we went to your, the comp plan and the zoning ordinance. And considering that, you know, where the two to five acre, uh, units per acre sits, we're right in the middle of that. Um, the higher end of that isn't even achievable, achievable on, on properties, because the first thing we do is we take storm out of the land. And then we take right of waste out of the land and you really can't achieve that higher end anyway. But we figured with the, the middle ground there is where we started, so. Um, and yeah, that market. Now with this particular developer, he, um, just to be clear of the other comments, um, that were brought up. He's going to build two of these homes for his kids. You know, that's just a unique thing about this developer. It's the first. Uh, build that he's done, the first development that he's done, that's more than a house on a lot that he bought somewhere. So, uh, yeah, he wants to keep his children local and, um, and this is the way he wants to do it. So. Um. As far as the, the comp plan, you know, and that's the, that's the price point that we were going to, that's why we went to that, that wasn't really. Uh, driven by the economics, yes, there has to be a profit in this for everybody to, to be here, you know? Um, but the margins on this particular one aren't where we usually start at. And when I say usually. If you look at a pro farmer, we're usually starting at forty-five, fifty percent and we usually end up about thirty-five to thirty percent. On a profit margin. Now, since we last spoke to the planning commission. There was some decisions, uh, with the developer being made that he is going to build all these. He's, he's really got to build all these in order to get, um, not only the, the, get the price point that he wants. But he's got to do both to make that work for him at this point. Um, and then just keep in mind, when we adjust lots or reconfigure, as they get bigger. All the fixed costs that are going to be buried in fewer lots. That's just how some of that math is going to work. The houses determine the rest of that and we don't have house build prices right now, so. Um, I do have, uh, Josh Rizberg here with me and he's on, here on behalf of Gavnet Properties and the developer here. Um, he's here to answer questions as well, so. I guess the message I want to send is that we're just committed to work with the neighbors going forward. And, uh, hopefully we can get to a compromise and come back with a preliminary plat that works. Not everybody's going to be happy, Mr. Mayor said, uh, but, uh, maybe we can get to the point where we have a, a healthy balance. Are there any other questions, I?
So, oh, go ahead. Um, so. You met with the neighbors, a lot of neighbors, and you want to work with the neighbors. What did you hear from the neighbors?
The, a lot of things. Number one was the traffic that was most commonly talked about. Um, we talked about, um, well, I was the one that put the list together after the meeting, so I'm going to go by memory here, so bear with me, but.
Really what stood out?
The, the character, the density, traffic.
How do we fix those?
Well, we have to go back to the drawing board, it sounds like, and look at what is that character? How do we identify what exactly it is and how we incorporate it?
And we were, it was ghosted for eight, you're at sixteen. We got to figure out how we can make that somewhere in there. I don't know that number either. It's already been set here. We don't know that number. But clearly sixteen is not, is not on these folks' minds right now at all. And I, I am concerned about. What kind of lots those, uh, uh, four through nine, how they're going to play out, four is probably not bad, probably. Probably five, six, seven. Uh, how they're even going to work into that and are you better off there opening up and putting. A house there with side lot versus back lot. I mean, I think you just have to be creative in how we're going to work with this. But I, I think it's clear, what I've heard and what I've read in my packet is sixteen is too many in there and I. I live in this neighborhood too. I know all of this stuff. I know the traffic. I know the stuff. Um, we hear a lot about people driving too fast. The problem is there, that's the neighbors. It's, there's no drive-through. It's one of your neighbors that's speedy. And when I tell anybody that comes forward with a not drive-through area is create a neighborhood. Email chain and say, your red truck just went through here at fifty miles an hour. Now you called them out. But there is no cut through. There's nobody going in there other than occasional, well, there's probably a lot of Amazon trucks and UPS. But it's generally your neighbors that's speedier. I get that. But we just got to figure out how. And, and how we can come between eight and sixteen. How, how do we, how do we do that? I, I, somebody said, you got economics? We have concerns of neighbors that have been there for a long time. It's hard. Nineteen ninety-seven, this was plotted. I mean, it's a long time, things change and none of our zoning really changed. I think the developers have just. Made houses on, put houses on smaller lots. And, and, and stuff like that, but this was set up for a lot, uh, like the rest of the neighborhood with the, with the larger lots. And, and stuff like that. So I, I, I too struggle with this and if, I think we have to really look at this and really be creative. To make. This work and if he's going to have his children living there, that's the last thing you want to do is have a development that no one likes. And, and they're part of that development. So I, I think that. We, we do need to relook at how we can do this and I don't know how that is. That's something way smarter than me. But I can tell, but that, that's not what the folks here are looking for at this point. And it sounds like the council's not real. On board with this either.
So. Without getting prescriptive, your best litmus test, if you got it right, is if the neighbors are okay with it.
I don't know as though, uh, just to go on the record, I don't know as though we're going to get there, but that we're going to make every effort to get there.
I mean, and I, I think that's clear, you, you came here, now we got to find there. And, and we, we need to take that time and that's why, that's why they have this concept phase, you know? We got to touch it three more times before anything happens. This is to say. Can this person develop this? That's where we are today. And that's what's put out there. Now what happens after that, that's another. That, that's what we have to do, but I, I, I guess my point is, is that I think the neighbors are very clear. There's not, they're all pretty much on the same page. Uh, where they want to be and it, I would say their number one concern is size of lots and the number of houses. I mean, the, the traffic and stuff like that. Everyone gets used to it. I mean, it'll, because it was always planned to be there anyways. So the road system's there. Yes, we lost exits out. Forty-one was taken away years back. There's already a house in there where that was, um, and it's not coming back forty-one. Uh, I like the fact that someone looked in and we can use the old Jasper's house as a construction entrance. That takes away a lot of problems. Uh, we have that in the Stance Woods right now that we use an old driveway. And it keeps all that traffic out and that, that's a very, it relieves a lot of tensions from the neighbors.
Indeed, and that credit needs to go to Ashley, by the way.
What's that?
That credit needs to be, go to Ashley because she.
Well, and that's, that's what's, I, I mean, that's why we got to work together and keep working together, uh, on, on things like that, so. Um. So, so is this. We're probably at a point where we got to do something now. Is this where we can still vote approval?
Yep.
And yet they can come and make changes and then it has to come back before us again. And if it's still not where we want to be, that's where it could be rejected or accepted.
I mean, my suggestion would be you do exactly that, that you actually, I, I would suggest that you actually. Put in, uh, something a little bit stronger than maybe even the planning commission put in, just based on what I'm hearing you guys say. Uh, that makes it clear that you are directing staff to work with. Uh, the developer to come up with, uh, the appropriate size density within that neighborhood, something to that effect.
What he said right there.
Well, before you have a seat, I just comment, I, I appreciate you coming forward. I know it's not easy to step up front and. With people behind you that have different opinions than you, right? And I, and I appreciate your willingness to work with that. Now, I will say that, um, in the six years, six years that I've been up here, most of the developers who've stood there and made those same comments, it's, it's worked out. Um, it hasn't always worked out. It's not a hundred percent. There's been some that you see concepts and, and it doesn't.
There's some give and takes.
It doesn't come back. Um, so I appreciate that and words, words get you so far and I, and I, I take you, I have no reason not to take you for your word on that. Um, but again, to me, it really is that, it's that kind of that preliminary, um, you know, kind of a piece of that. And again, I don't necessarily think, I don't, I don't think you're going to get to eight. Um, but as, as the mayor, you know, said, it's in between there. It's trying to figure out lot size. Created with that berm piece, you know, that's an interesting lot to sell regardless, right? If you're staring at a berm that has a major state highway right behind it, that can be a challenge. So how do you, how do you make that marketable? Uh, but again, I do appreciate you being here and, and speaking because it's not always easy, uh, doing that when necessarily. You, you know, there's strong opinions, uh, against it or for it, right? So thanks.
And I'm just going to put this out, I'm just going to put this out there that I'm going to cast my vote as a no, but with the intent that you will earn my vote. When we get the neighbors on board. That's when, that's when we'll get my vote. But I'm just putting it out there so everyone's aware of that, because you know, like everyone can choose how they want to vote. But this is something to me, it's important because I want to make sure that I'm representing at least the voice of the neighbors that. You know, they need to know that, you know, we're behind them, right? And this is not something that's just like, oh, it's just a rubber stamp and it's all good and everything's always going to pass. It's not, right? You know, and we take this really seriously. There is a, there is a, every home that's, I mean, you look at how many homes are built in Chaska. How many homes have been torn down in Chaska in the past hundred years? Not that many, right? So the homes that are going to be built will probably last at least fifty, if not a hundred years from now. So let's make sure we do it right. Make sure that all the families that live there now still feel good about living there after this is done.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to point clarification, um, from councils, comments, uh, what we're suggesting is that you vote. With conditions, we work with the neighbors and. If we get to a point where we're confident, we get to a compromise, then we come back with preliminary plat?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So. Based on customer laws comments. So help me understand, say, say this all of a sudden, everybody votes no. What happens? Just to get clarification, does anybody know? Is, is it, is, is the project out? Do they come back with a new, I, I just, I want up, people up here to be very clear how they're voting and if they're voting no. What happens under that? Because, um, like, and so again, so the audience understands. Concept for us is, is there something that they can do there? They need something to work with and go back. This is their original plan. Now you take everything and all of our comments and they go back and find that new one. But if we vote no. They would have to come back with a totally new project then, correct? They may know.
Yeah, they resubmit for a concept.
Yeah, mayor and council members, they would have to resubmit a new concept, um, would be the simple answer. I think the, the challenge with a no vote is then. Um, you know, there's communicated that obviously this is not a concept that you all are going to be willing to accept.
If you're going to vote no, typically there'd be some findings to support that. Uh, vote of a no, um, so you could be communicating the rationale behind that. Um, Kristoff, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, if, if you vote no, you should state the reason for your no on the record.
Right, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Council, if, if I'm not mistaken, if it. Uh, council, if, if I'm not mistaken, if it follows the same pattern as a preliminary plat, if it's a vote no majority. I believe there can't be another application unless it's dramatically different for twelve months. I mean, like a completely different project.
He has to check the ordinance. What, what I would say is that our process is. Somewhat different than other communities with a concept plan, uh, because the concept plan is meant to be very broad.
Uh, that's why I said what I said earlier.
Yes, and that's, that's why I wanna be clear that by us, I think you've pretty much heard. The comments where we feel on this. And because we're voting for a concept plan, doesn't mean that's what we're getting. And so I, I hope that's the biggest thing that folks understand is, is that. He brought a plan forward. They brought a plan forward. It's been addressed by the planning commission. The planning commission. They're reading our ordinances, so they voted eight oh. They're following because it meets our ordinances. That's their job. Now our job is to look at, how do we think it fits? They told us that legally it fits here. Now we have to think about how does it fit there. So, um. So, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, is just because we vote yes, doesn't mean the plan's moving forward. It has to give the developer, he's got what we heard, what you heard. Now they have to go back and kinda come back with a compromise. They'll work with staff and the next time it comes back to council, you'll all be notified again. And you will see what has changed or not changed. Again, at that point, then if, if the council is not happy at that point. Then it, the project could be stopped. Or relooked at again. Um, so that's kinda how this process works. And I, I agree with the, I agree with the developer here. A, a no would really change everything, but I think us voting yes would help them. Move to where we hope we all wanna be. So, uh, I, like I said, I hope that. Eases any concerns out there because if we vote yes for a concept. That just gives them the opportunity to keep working on the plan that they have and make the necessary hopeful find that. Find that medium ground where, where we both can be somewhat happy.
And those conditions in place that they have to work with you guys in order to um, come up with something that. Is well-rounded on both sides.
Well said.
Oh, you're good. Yeah, yeah. Thanks. What's that?
Well said, Mayor.
Um, so.
This is not an easy answer to find in our zoning ordinance, by the way. Because the.
We're gonna be all right.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the issue ends up being, i- it's a lot more clear when you're actually getting to the actual zoning of the property. We're not considering the zoning of the property tonight. We're just considering a concept.
Concept.
Yeah. If you, if you're getting to a zoning of the property, I think developer is right. I think then that's when you get to. An issue of when you.
Submit.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any further comments from council? I think that we're. Pretty well off top this through, but if anyone has a comment, please feel free. Okay. All right, um, with that, is there someone that'd be willing to make a motion? And I'm trying to think of how Matt said that, so.
Could you work in conjunction with the city staff to come up with an appropriate uh? Appropriate uh, level of density for the neighborhood?
That, you mentioned something about conditions, what? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion with the condition that the developer works with the city staff. To consider the density or however Matt said it.
I'm assuming you guys are keeping the.
The other.
You're adding, we're adding this piece to what planning.
In addition to what's been stated.
My motion is to add that to what the planning commission.
All right, so a motion by Councilor Hafford.
Second.
Second by council member Hubbard. And I'm trying to figure out if I know how to say this. So we, uh, the motion is. Um, to approve. Uh, the concept plan. Uh, with the idea that the developer works with city staff and residents to, to find the appropriate density.
Yeah, I would make it clear that you're accepting the planning commission's conditions.
And the planning commission's conditions, all right. I bet. All right. Motion's still good for the two motion makers?
Yes.
Okay. With that. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
All right, passes four to one. So we'll move on to the concept and we'll see what happens from there. Thank you folks for being there. Appreciate it. All right. All right, we move on to item eight B, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight. Or resolution twenty-four dash fifty-two and ordinance ten forty-five, approving preliminary site and building plan. And rezoning for Hazelton National Golf Course.
Eric Housner, this is the, uh, and another item coming back from the planning commission. Uh, this is in relation to. The guest cottages that are being proposed at Hazelton National Golf Course, just to the west of the clubhouse. Uh, which would also include a short, uh, uh, short course, uh. Uh, golf course that would go in conjunction with it. Uh, the planning commission did recommend a approval of the uh, preliminary uh, site and building plan. And is it Liz or Ashley? Liz? All right, Liz is gonna be.
Matt, uh, thank you, mayor and council members. Uh, we have a prelim- preliminary site and building plan and rezoning request. This evening for Hazelton National Golf Course, known as the northwest side. Of the site, which is being proposed uh, by Hazelton Golf Club. Uh, so the site in question this evening is highlighted in orange on this aerial exhibit. Um, we have. Um, residential bordering on the north side, the Loop Golf Course, um, which is the city's golf course on the north side. Um, additional residential and commercial on the west side. Um, and Hazelton Golf Course, um, surrounding the south and east sides of the property. Uh, the main roads uh, in this area is Huntermark Road, which abuts the west side of the site and then Hazelton Boulevard on the north side. So we're at the second stage in the process of the city's three-step review process. So we're looking at uh, more of the civil and architectural. Plans uh, with this step in the process. So there's still an additional final step for this project. Um, in terms of uh, previous approvals and some background, um, the concept plan. Uh, came forward in March of this year and before that they did hold a neighborhood meeting in February. Um, some of the um, main key points that kind of came out of the concept plan. Process was uh, looking at the overall parking analysis of the site. On the northwest side, they use um, the northwest side for overflow parking during their larger special events and with the. New improvements proposed there, we wanted to understand how that would impact um, their overall. Uh, parking for the site during those larger events. Um, understanding uh, traffic with the new um, main entrance realignment at the end of Hazelton Boulevard. Um, we also commented on making the uh, west access, uh, which is a service. Entry access or uh, gravel road access into the site um, to line up. Where it uh, uh, currently lines up today across from Hazelton Plaza here. Um, and then looking at provisions of uh, sidewalk connections uh, for the site. Uh, specifically on the south side of Hazelton Boulevard, uh, to connect into the existing uh, pedestrian systems that. Exists on the west side of Huntermark Road and then also showing a future uh, connection on the east side of Huntermark Road. Uh, some existing uh, conditions of the site, the overall site, so encompassing uh, the entire golf course site. Totals approximately three hundred and thirty-five acres. Um, total and then the area in question this evening, so on the northwest side of the site, we're talking about a thirteen acre. Portion of the site. Um, there are trees that exist on the north edge of the property, um, and I'll show. Um, or speak to that a, a little bit more later in terms of what's being saved, um. The access onto Hazelton Boulevard, uh, the way it's situated today is, um, the golf course has. Uh, three access points, so we have two service entry access points. Um, that are on either side of the main entrance. Into the golf course, so the main entrance is basically lined up with one of the townhome. Uh, developments, um, which is uh. Uh, kind of a right end and then left out uh, from the site. And this is the one in question that will be relocated. And then there is another service road access onto Huntermark Road that I mentioned before. Um, in terms of parking for the site, there's a total of two hundred and four stalls that exist today. Um, there's also an existing clubhouse building that's approximately fifty thousand square feet in size and is. Not shown on this exhibit here, uh, but is more central um, to the overall site. Um, and today no trails or sidewalks uh, exist on Huntermark or Hazelton Boulevard adjacent to this property. Uh, just a couple photos of uh, the existing conditions out there. So the upper images um, show. The northwest area, which is primarily agricultural area, and this is where they have their overflow parking for those larger special events. And then the bottom images show um, the clubhouse site in and around there. Uh, so the request this evening is for preliminary site and building plan, uh, which specifically includes adding eight one-story villas. For onsite lodging for members of the golf course. Um, a new putting course, a new short course totaling ten holes of play. Um, and then modifications to the main vehicle entrance into the site on Hazelton Boulevard. Uh, the second part of this request is a rezoning, so the um, property is currently in the open zoning district, uh, which is a holding zone. Until um, development occurs for rezoning to happen. Um, so it. Uh, this evening, uh, the rezoning from plan multi u- or from open to. Plan multi-use district, uh, specifically P M D twenty-three.
So, so Liz, uh, I'm gonna stop you there so I don't lose it. Just that piece of property is zoned open? And then the rest is zoned, whatever a golf course is?
Um, actually, the entire property is zoned open. So all parcels of the golf course. So the ones in question tonight that have the improvements proposed on them is what would be rezoned.
So, and. It's, it's gotta be rezoned because we're putting residential. All right.
Have to have zoning to reflect the use on the site. Um, so some key points of the preliminary plan, we have the preliminary plan shown. On this slide here, um.
So the gated entrance is past all the residential entrances then, correct? Down Birdie Lane? Yeah.
The main gated entrance or? Yep, so they're proposing that at the end of Hazelton Boulevard, kind of near.
So Birdie Lane will stay open, all of that? Okay. But I just, I could never tell in my pictures where that was going.
Sure. Yep, so Birdie Lane will remain open and, and its current spot. Um, the access points on Hazelton Boulevard, um, again, the. Service entry drives, um, on the uh, east and west sides of the main entrance will remain and those are gated entries. That only um, either employees or delivery people uh, utilize uh, on site. Um, the main entrance, vehicle entrance into the site again is relocating from where it sat. Uh, or where it's sitting, sorry, where it's sitting today right here, um, and being moved easterly to the end of Hazelton Boulevard here. Um, and this was intentionally done, um, or intentionally proposed to provide. Uh, better ease of access um, into the site uh, for Hazelton.
So when they have those, are they manned or just like uh, electronic?
Um, today it's just a open pass through, but with this proposal, they are planning to add a gatehouse, so it would be. Uh, occupied by personnel.
Be occupied.
Yep.
I didn't know if it was just a. Unmanned or whatever, electronic.
Mm-hmm, yep, so there, there will be actual gates um, into the site, so people will have.
And then the, the. The gated service. Entries. They're gonna have. A, a, a gate or they're gonna have to go through the main one and then what, I don't. What's the purpose of the? The other service entry gated service entries? I mean, I get service entries, but. How are they gonna be utilized? Or how's that work?
Yeah, and that might be a better question for the applicant to expand on, um, but they would operate much like they do today.
Hey, there is nothing. You just drive in there.
Well, into the main vehicle entrance, but the other two service entries are gated today. Or they have a fence up, so. There is control over who enters and exits the site from both of those locations. Um, the parking for the site, um. Will provide a total of uh, three hundred and fifty-five stalls, um. Uh, two hundred and twenty-seven of those are new, so um. A bigger parking lot uh, will be situated between kind of the main uh, clubhouse of. Parking and then between the villas that are proposed here. Uh, so a total of three hundred and fifty-five stalls, um, are being accommodated on site between the new and the existing. Parking lot there. Uh, the villas, again, which are a total of eight one-story villas. Will be kind of in between the proposed parking lot and the putting green and the new short course. Um, and those will be kind of um, spread out um, north to south along. Um, kind of a golf cart corridor there. Um, each villa will be um, rentable for the members of the golf course. And each of them will contain four bedrooms each, so a total of thirty-two bedrooms. Uh, uh, between the eight villa units. Uh, the putting course is this uh, smaller gray area directly to the west of the villas. Um, this will be a lit course with uh, ten-foot lanterns. Um, and then uh, directly west of that is where the short course would be located. Um, and have a total of ten holes. Um, and these uh, holes will also be lit by thirty-five foot high uh, pole lights. Um, the site plan is also contemplating uh, birmingham landscaping on the north and west sides of the site. To help provide some privacy to both the golf course and adjacent residential. Uh, and then. In response to the condition of approval in concept regarding a pedestrian connection. The applicant has shown two different locations uh, for a pedestrian connection to occur, both on the north and the south sides. Um, and we'll get into that a little bit later, um, in another slide here. And then just wanna note that the existing service access point on Ha- on Huntermark um, is shown in the same location. Um, as it exists today. Um, the grading and the birmingham proposed here, so again, um, that will occur on the north and west sides, um, the red. Numbers indicate kind of the general um, height of those firms adjacent to. Uh, the roadway elevations on Hazelton Boulevard and Huntermark Road. Um, so there will be a, a modest firm along um. Uh, the north side of the proposed parking lot, approximately four feet. And then kind of uh, gradually go up in height along the north side and then a pretty significant firm on the west side. Uh, adjacent to Huntermark Road, um, and that additional uh, residential to the west. Um, they will also be landscaping, um. Uh, quite significantly through the site with the new uh, parking and site improvements. Um, a lot of the landscaping will be oriented to the north and the west sides of the site to help. Provide that extra layer of um, screening to the birmingham. Um, here's a couple uh, images of the proposed villas, uh, so the intent is to match. The clubhouse design and both materials and um, overall design, um, so they are using a mix of composite siding. Um, some wood, um. Uh, wood siding, stone, um, and glass to match the existing clubhouse. And then the elevations of the gatehouse, the gatehouse would utilize that stone that's found on the clubhouse. Uh, so just a couple items that were um, brought up during the concept plan and kind of. How we're addressing them um, in this preliminary submittal, um, so one of the items was. Understanding the parking and the impact of the loss on the northwest side. Being that this will be improved and converted into a short course and villas, um. So, uh, with the parking they're providing onsite, they're providing three hundred and fifty-five parking stalls. Which exponentially exceeds what they need to do uh, for the. Overall parking need of the site during normal operations, um. So having that extra parking will certainly help with some of those larger events that they hold onsite. Uh, the area in red here, uh, where they currently use for overflow parking is about eleven acres of parking, um. And they'll be able to recuperate about seven acres on the southwest side of the site for the loss that was. Um, created here, so they are able to gain seven acres of. Uh, overflow parking on the southwest side, um. So there's a, a net loss of four acres of overflow parking, which in turn. Uh, amounts to three hundred, four hundred uh, stalls onsite that they would need to account for offsite. Um, and as most people know, they do shuttling services during their larger events, especially during the Ryder Cup. Um, so shifting three hundred to four hundred cars offsite into shuttling. Uh, locations is not a significant um, impact. To the overall system, and they believe they can accommodate that within their shuttling system.
Cause that's really not uh, an issue of ours, that's an issue of theirs, correct, yeah?
Yep, we just wanted to understand what that meant for them, moving forward. Uh, another item um, is uh, the relocation of the, the main vehicle entrance down to the east side of Hazelton. Uh, Boulevard, um. And what that means from a spacing um, condition between the existing entry points um, off of uh. Hazelton Boulevard, um, so the city's policy is to limit the amount of access points onto local roads. Uh, as much as possible to reduce confusion, um, and potential hazards with adjoining traffic. Um, and also providing adequate spacing between access points so that there's clear indication of. Uh, who's moving in and out of sites, uh, when you. Couple those up pretty close together, it does become more confusing as you're exiting or entering a site, um. So being able to provide adequate spacing in between um, access points is uh, the goal here. Um, with the change of uh, the main entry moving down to the east side of Hazelton Boulevard, it. Puts it roughly seventeen and a half feet away from this existing service entry here. Um, also moves it closer to the intersection with Birdie Lane, um, so there is concern about um. The amount of access points that are happening at the end of Hazelton Boulevard here, so. The city's recommendation um, is to combine this service entry into the main entry. Um, into the site so that it's only one versus having two separate ones uh, at the end there. Again, this is uh, coming from a, a safety uh, perspective. Um, allowing or having uh, those combined, um, just. Makes this uh, intersection here um, easier to navigate for users, both on the Birdie Lane side. As well as uh, people utilizing the golf course. So there is a condition of approval uh, from staff's recommendation uh, to um. Consolidate these uh, access points into one to help uh, reduce that confusion. And provide better safety for traffic flow. And then the other discussion item is the sidewalk connection uh, for the site, so uh, as we mentioned before, there are no. Pedestrian connections on the north and south sides of Hazelton Boulevard, uh, east of Hunter Mark Road here. Um, so, uh, per policy with development coming in, um. We require a sidewalk connection, um. If there's uh, connections in place, if there's opportunity to connect into existing systems out there. Uh, we make that a requirement, a part of new development. Um, the applicant has submitted again both um, a version on the north side and the south side. Uh, they would prefer the north side, um, as it provides more privacy for their site. Um, so they are wanting to move forward with that, um. Um, uh, layout or uh, uh, situation for. The uh, pedestrian connection to occur on the north side, um. Staff would recommend that the connection happen on the south side for a couple. Uh, different reasons, um, one is that there would be less coordination with the neighbors on the north side. Or I'm sorry, less coordination um, would need to occur. If the sidewalk is pursued on the south side, cause it's just one property owner, which is uh, Hazelton Golf Course. If um, the north side was pursued, there are a number of property owners that would need to be coordinated with. Um, to make that happen. Um, there's also a, a great level of utilities that exist on the north side, so there's more, um. Uh, coordination that needs to happen with um, maneuvering through utility corridors, so there's definitely an added complexity there. On the north side, um. And then on the south side with there being a trail on the south side of Hazelton Boulevard, uh, west of the site. Having that uh, southern connection here would provide a continuous. Uh, connection into the existing facilities that already um, exist on the west side of the property.
That path would be below berm, correct, so. Berm on the right side with the berm, down below.
Right, if. If they pursue the connection on the south side here, it would be outside of where the berm is. So it'd be the sidewalk, and then some green area, and then the berm. And then just to be uh, consistent with other proposed developments, we require those sidewalk connections to occur on the side of. The site that is being reviewed, so. Uh, going away from that would be inconsistent with how we've reviewed, reviewed uh, pedestrian connections and other projects. So that is staff recommendation to pursue uh, the south side uh, for those various reasons stated. Um, and then another piece that I wanna bring up, um, is. The inclusion of the Performance Center on the Golf Course site. Uh, we recently received a concept plan application for um, this added improvement to the Golf Course site, which came after. Um, we went through concept plan for the villas in the short course, um, so they're going kind of in a separate path, um. With this Performance Center, but we wanna at least let you know that it's coming through the process, um. The Performance Center is basically a new building that'll be adjacent to their uh, driving range. In this general location here. Um, that will.
It'll be off the end of that cul-de-sac, I couldn't see your mouse.
Um, yep, so it'll be off of the end of that turnaround next to the villas, yep. This is the driving range here, so it's, it's basically this space here. Um, so they have applied for that, um, and are anticipated to go uh, in. Uh, during the June meetings of Planning Commission and City Council. Um, this building would basically contain indoor and outdoor uh, golf simulation and um, hitting base. Putting and then um, small dining and lounge, um, area within that. So we did add a condition of approval. Uh, to the uh, resolutions, um, that we have in front of you this evening. Uh, to combine the final approval of the villas with the final of the Performance Center, um. Which are noted as either condition sixteen on the city's recommended resolution. Or condition number fifteen on um, the Planning Commission uh, recommendation. Um, the purpose of this condition being added is to provide, um, or to combine these um, improvements together. So that we can look at it holistically, um. I do wanna offer up uh, an alternative in modification to that condition of approval. Uh, that the applicant is uh, amenable towards uh, to. Meet their uh, timing needs for these improvements, um, is that. They would pair their preliminary application of the Performance Center with the final of the villas. Um, and we are acceptable to that option, uh, versus doing the finals together, as this would be. Um, again, an opportunity to combine um, and look at uh, the improvements together in that, um. Combination of the preliminary and the final. And this would align with their um, timing uh, needs uh, to pursue the villas, um. And uh, coming in with the Performance Center. Um, so we might. Uh, need um, the assistance of uh, Kristoff on how we need to modify that, if that's what we choose to. Move forward with. Um, so just to recap a couple things that need to be worked on for final for the villas and the short course. Um, staff's recommendation is to remove or combine the east service entry into the main vehicle entrance to help with safety. And um, lessen the, the hazards and confusion there. Um, providing adequate fire access to the proposed villas, I didn't get into too much detail here, but. There are a couple ways to look at that, whether that's fire sprinkling or uh, modifying some of the um. Turnarounds in front of uh, the villas on the north and south sides. Um, and I know the, the applicant is working towards those solutions. Um, and then pro- provision of a pedestrian connection, whether that be a trail uh, section or a sidewalk section. On the south side of Hazelton Boulevard. Um, and then uh, looking at combination of the review of the Performance Center, whether that be their preliminary, um. With the final review of the villas. Um, or both finals together, um, but we are acceptable to combining. The preliminary of the Performance Center with the final of the villa in short course.
That, that's legal for us to do that? So.
Yep, they'll be, they'll be separate um, actions taken, just in. And how they're set up from a timing perspective, but we can do that, just based on where they, where they're at.
My understanding that June will see the. Concept. And then the final of this project. And the preliminary on the other project will come together, but that'll be preliminary and final.
Yeah, we're just, we're trying to coordinate.
I get it, I, I understand that, but I just want us to make sure. One, we're not setting some kind of a precedent that we certainly don't wanna do skipping a phase. Um, but I totally understand the idea behind it, and I just wanna make sure that. We still look at all the necessary steps, I, I don't see it being an issue, but I, I just wanted to be clear on how we're handling it.
So we are. Um, asking you to make a motion this evening, or sorry, before I get to that, um. Just wanna point out, uh, the action that was taken by Planning Commission on May eighth, um. They did uh, provide a couple modifications to the conditions of approval that were laid out by staff. Um, so they did recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan for the villas in short course. Um, with a recommendation to remove condition number nine, which pertained to the. Combination of the, the main uh, vehicle entrance and easternmost service road entrance, um. They didn't want that to be a condition included. And then they also asked to modify condition number eleven to state that the applicant and the city. Um, explore both sidewalk options on the north and south sides of Hazelton Boulevard, but. As long as the sidewalk is pursued, um, and for that reflection to be on the final plans, um, staff's. Um, condition of approval is to add a pedestrian connection on the south side of Hazelton Boulevard. For the reasons we stated in that previous um, slide. So Planning Commission's direction was to still explore both options on the north and south sides. Um, as long as the sidewalk is installed with the project. So those are their, um. Uh, recommendations for the conditions of approval, and then they also did recommend approval of the rezoning from open to PMD. Twenty-three. Um, so hopefully not to make it any more confusing, um. We have two resolutions in front of you this evening to reflect both the city's recommendation. Um, and also the Planning Commission's recommendation, so. Depending on what direction you feel strongly about, um, you can move forward with either option. Um, and I just wanna clarify that uh, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight. Um, would be approving the preliminary site and building plan for the golf course that is consistent with staff's recommend, recommendation. Which would be to keep condition number nine regarding um, combining the access points on Hazelton Boulevard.
So that is in favor of combining them, or?
That's staff's recommendation.
And then also to keep condition number eleven as it uh, is stated. To require the pedestrian connection on the south side of Hazelton Boulevard. And then the other option, which is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two, this would be. Consistent with Planning Commission's recommendation, so. Their recommendation to eliminate condition number nine regarding the uh, access points and consolidating those. And modifying condition number eleven to um, require the applicant and city to explore both. Sidewalk options on the north and south sides of Hazelton Boulevard. So you're picking one or the other, um. And then, um.
So can I ask why they would want to eliminate number nine?
Um, they didn't feel like it was necessary, if I heard them correctly, it wasn't necessary to combine both. They felt that the eastern service entry was minimally used, and therefore it didn't pose a concern with. Um, the other access points on to Hazelton Boulevard.
Okay, and then, why keep it open to two sidewalks?
I think they wanted that. Both options to be fully explored before landing on either or.
I'll tell you, uh, on the. Option eleven with the sidewalk, it would be very rare. I can't think of a condition where we've actually said, we'll put it on the other side.
Yeah, that, that makes no sense.
And the issue that you run into with that is there's multiple property owners. And we don't have the right to put the, that, so we'd actually have to go and purchase properties to actually put that on there, so. You know, that's why it's always been required to be part of the actual development itself.
But, you, you know, it says here to explore, we've explored that. And it. It's more feasible to keep it on the south side, so in fifty-two there, if it says. And, and modify number eleven to require applicant and city to explore, well, isn't that done?
Maybe the exploration.
We haven't asked about buying the property, but, but I do know that.
Why would we buy the property when?
So, I mean, that's. To clarify on that, I guess. If, if city, or if, yeah, if city council wanted to proceed with the Planning Commission's recommendation on the sidewalk, that both sides be explored. I would strongly recommend that you clarify on that. Um, I mean, the intention here is that. The applicant is implementing the sidewalk, right? So whether it's on the north side or the south side. It would be unheard of, the city ends up contributing to that implementation, right? Um, so I, I think that might be a good clarification, if you're thinking you wanna continue to explore both, just to clarify that. This is the developer's responsibility to implement. Um, I mean, you could make the argument that if they wanna go forward and. And deal with all of that.
Sustancy issue here.
Right.
Uh, I mean, that, there, there's a precedent that we've never set on a development to look at trying to push. A trail or a sidewalk onto a property that's a, a joint or a, across the street from it. Um, now you could make the argument of saying, well, there's people who live over on that side of the. The road, and so they might want a sidewalk connection to, to go down there, but we also can make a crosswalk there too. Uh, so, you know, it.
There isn't any sidewalks on that.
No, there is.
Oh, they'd be walking down the road no matter where they came from.
Right, today, yes.
Right now, but if you put a sidewalk. Right now, but if you put a sidewalk over there, you know, but we can also make a crosswalk to, to get people over to a sidewalk.
For Lake Shore Drive and for the other gateway one, right? Yeah. Cover, cover green. So what if, I mean hypothetically asking for a friend. So what if we wanted to eliminate condition, eliminate condition nine, but leave. Condition eleven to, okay, because it's not an option that's there right now.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, I mean, that is a third option that you could have.
You can, I mean, you, just like you would with any resolution, right? Council's got every ability to offer. It's, you know, amendments to, right?
Cause I'm just asking because it was presented in this way. So, okay.
We're just trying to distinguish between planning commission's recommendation versus what, you know, staff is recommending and give you those.
So if we make our own combination, is that a new number then?
No, not necessarily. I mean, I mean, we, we can always rework the, the actual resolution to, to match that.
Yeah, the thing you could do would be to say you're going to adopt, you know, pick your number and then amend it to fit what you're wanting to do.
Any further questions up here? I want to give the applicant, he looks like he wants to speak. To give him an opportunity to. Say something.
I have a question, I think it's a city question, but it may turn into an athlete question too. And I think I asked this before, forgot. So. The villas are owned by Hazelton and rented out to people, correct? Therefore, since, I guess my question is, this doesn't exist today, but there's councils that will come after me. In a situation where like cities have banned VRBOs and pools, would that impact this? The way it's set up because it's not, okay, that's why.
Cause it's owned that way.
Perfect. That's why I wanted to make sure because I didn't want to have unintended consequences if, if future councils act differently on some of those things. My assumption was it's because of the way it's, it's not, I'm not owning it and then renting it out. Second, it's. The establishment, the golf course in this case.
And more specifically zoning it for this purpose.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, that was my question. I just want to make sure that we don't build something and then councils of the future change their minds and do, do different things.
Did you want to speak? I don't, I'm not sure. It looks like you do.
He's got paper ready. He's ready. I like it.
Well, thank you very much, Phil Anderson, General Manager, Hayside National Golf Club. Appreciate everyone's time and attention on this important project and initiative that we're going through. But just wanted to address from the club's perspective, a couple of items that we did review with planning commission, which is the entries. The entries are important to us from a championship perspective to have opportunities to certainly get delivery trucks in and out. We've got multiple trucks coming in that are different than what we'd want coming through the gatehouse with our member and guest entrance. We have buses, we've got teams coming in. Having multiple points of entry is important to us. We look at the certainly opportunity to coordinate with the neighborhood, provide a better. Operation as a whole. And I think we've accomplished that by moving our main entrance up further. And really smoothing out the exit out of Hayside National Golf Club, whereas the service entry that's being represented right now today. That's a left-hand turn out of there, which can create some confusion. By only having that as a right-hand turn for service entry coming in, we think that's a wonderful solution to kind of some of the considerations.
How's the service gate set up? What does that have?
So those will have gates as well, and those be certainly have either technology to it with our delivery organizations so that they can get in and out. But from a flow and a parking lot standpoint, we want to come right in with a right-hand turn with deliveries. To be able to move our way to our loading dock, back in, work their way back out the other entry on the backside.
Seems like it's a pinch point. Everything comes to the one spot anyways.
It, it does for your main entrance, but having, being a separate member and guest traffic into one area. And having the deliveries flared on both sides, and then certainly for event opportunities where you've got a significant amount of people in and around the clubhouse. If you're trying to get dignitaries out, whatever it might be, to have more opportunities to get in and out of those areas is important to us. We looked down the street, related to this request, and we see Hazelton Professional Building with less parking spots and with three entrances and exits. So to look at our property and say that it needs to be restricted to, we don't, we, we differ on that opinion.
What, what is the reasoning behind staff's thought on combining the two again?
To create a safer intersection there. You know, we have the main entrance.
On the screen again. So the way I saw it, you have the gated right here, but the service entrance right here. Is that correct?
We can map the first, the area right now today where our existing main entrance is effectively becomes a right-hand turn in for deliveries. So you don't have anyone exiting out left-hand turn in that particular area. They'll take that right-hand turn into the facility is a, we think a huge help in eliminating that left-hand turn. Coming out of the property, we believe helps the safety, certainly from a traffic flow standpoint as a whole.
So the guard gate is operating both gates then?
Our gate is operating both gates and you've got technology flared on the delivery entrances and exits. And we're trying to, really from experience standpoint, as you're coming into the entry of the club, as we're greeting guests. And exiting, we're trying to separate that traffic of delivery trucks from our member guest experience.
But I look at, if the truck comes up Hazelton Boulevard, they got to cut in front of the guardhouse and go over to that other entrance, correct?
Right-hand turn, right where the blue arrow is, service road entries. You're taking a right-hand turn, working through our parking lot. And then working your way across our parking lot to where the loading dock is. You're backing into that area.
Well, I thought the, the, the service gate is right next to it. So it's, no, it's down there.
Exit on the far side.
So they can only enter through the one and they can only exit through the other.
Right-hand turn to the service entry and then you're exiting on the, the farther north, closest to Birdie Lane. Which is streamlining the exit kind of down Hazelton Boulevard. Whereas today, when you leave the club, you're taking a left-hand turn and there's confusion. With the gap in the median there of making that turn and exit.
Staff is thinking of closing into, on that, the entrance on my left. Is, is that what, what our thought is? We would close that?
So Mayor, there's a, there's an entrance between the main entrance at the sort of end of Hazelton Boulevard there. And then you see Birdie Lane. In between that is a service exit, as it sounds like. And that's the piece that staff believes there's an opportunity to combine that. With that main entrance area to just eliminate. Congestion of access points that are there. You've got Birdie Lane, you've got the main action access, and then you've got this service access as well. Kind of all, you know, right next to each other.
The gate, they have to stop and the gate has to open in order for them to, to go through on that exit.
That's correct.
What about on the main exit or the other exit point there? Is there a stop sign or any sort of?
There's a gate to that delivery service road entry. So it'd be a gate there with technology as well.
I'm talking about the main one though, that one that the guests would be using.
One of guests, we, we have a, a guardhouse there, so we would have that manned. And then we'd also have technology implemented. So our members would be streamlined in with technology. Guests would be stopped and checked in to see who's coming on property.
Exiting though, are they exiting free and clear? Are they having to go through another gate? Are they having to stop before they go down the road?
You are stopped, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, good evening. I'm Brady Busselman with Samba Tech in Minnetoka, Minnesota, consulting civil engineer. So. I don't know Liz, if you were able to find the turning movement exhibit, but I think that helps. Okay, so Liz is working on that, but I think something else to consider here is that at this point Hazelton Boulevard ends. So you're effectively acting as a cul-de-sac. You're turning left onto Birdie or you're entering one of a couple of driveways. So if you view it that way, it changes the perception. You're not thinking of this as a full speed roadway. With two driveways that are seventeen feet apart. It's very similar to how a cul-de-sac would operate. On top of the mitigating factor that we've been discussing here, that it's gated, used in free. And designed the entrance to guide guests and people aren't familiar with the area into the entrance that they're supposed to go to as passengers. The other thing that this allows us to do, once we see the turning movement, there it is. So we've been able to narrow this entrance down to eighteen feet wide. Typically wouldn't do anything less than twenty-four feet. So that again helps. Narrow the entrance and, and shield it. We have the gate prominently. Near the, near the public roadway. So.
When they come in that service gate, you said, or that other service entrance, you said the trucks are taking a right. Coming in, where do they go once they get in that parking lot?
You can see the, the exact flow here. You're working their way down and then you're cutting, cutting directly across the parking lot to get to the loading dock comparatively to coming in.
There's a loading dock on there.
The dock is going to be in the far upper right-hand corner of this diagram right here. And then being able to back up into that, what you're seeing, the, that exercise kind of played out with this diagram. And then exiting back out that way.
Those trucks are going to be tangled with cars all along that. If they're coming in that service and coming around. How, how are they not going to be? This one's not making any sense to me on either side, quite honestly.
So the, that's a good question. The congestion point of the entrance when you're trying to. Get security to get guests through and.
You're far better off to have the truck come in next to the guard gate.
So if you. If you look at the alternative on the west side, the existing entrance. To get a truck through that, to make that right turn, you'd have to widen that entrance out significantly in that area. The other opportunity this provides is for buses to enter through that service gate and have their own separate route around to be dropped off. Which is also a factor.
Yeah, it's a significant factor.
They'd be going through the same gate because if, if there's cars, they got to wait because they come together to a pinch point. This is just.
Well, they come, they're exiting.
Yes, they're exiting at a pitch point. That's what I'm saying. If it's buses leaving or whoever.
Main gatehouse and you've got participants coming on property for a championship event. And you've got people being securities that are checking it in. And let's just say you've got a team coming in on the bus. To have a separate area to be, to take the right-hand turn and streamline through comparatively to putting them through that process. Those are some of the assets we have from our stakeholders. Cause we work with USG and PJ, they're saying, hey, you need to prepare. From multiple points of entry and exit. And we want to make sure that it's widened enough that we can get buses in and out. So if you've got players or their families or whatever it might be, we're not looking to, to work through the main entrance in that particular circumstance. We would use the service gate as you take the right-hand turn and streamline them right through.
They don't want to arrest Scotty Shuffler because he's going on the wrong entrance. I mean, that's, that, that kind of comes down to it. It's, it's that privacy and flow piece, right?
Well, I mean, I get, I get the right turn in there. I get that. But you're still going through all of the cars and traffic to get your trucks where they got to go.
Parking lot, yes.
So I don't know why we're, I don't know why we're sitting here arguing. It makes no sense to me. You're still crossing with the traffic.
I mean, I'll speak as an opinion. I, I think, I think I'm comfortable with that approach with what they're proposing. I understand the prestigiousness. They're really focusing on that, that member experience. They're going to sacrifice potentially how that travel goes through the parking lot. Because it means, and I, I. Can have opinions of how you want it to be. It means to that stakeholder, that individual, that, you know. Celebrity dignity, whatever it may be, if you're going to attract that, to be able to not have that go through. A more traffic space, right? Like that, that's what it's coming. That's what I'm hearing and I understand that, right?
What you're saying, council member, but I look at like pedestrian safety in this. I don't know. I'm unsure about the way this flows. You got to think if they're having a large event, there's a lot of cars parked in those stalls there that are illustrated. How do they safely get from point A to point B if there's routing of trucks kind of going through the same area? How do you keep those cars from not trying to go into the entrance only area to get exit out of that? I mean, I get signage, but. You know, where are the, where are the safety crossings in, in this? You know, where your pedestrians are going to be able to safely cross.
Like, I mean, that gets us to our next topic, which is pedestrian crossing and sidewalks and where it's going. I mean, I think from our perspective with the rezoning of PMD twenty-three, our residents that are on property are, are not. Leaving the property. They're coming on property to, to stay there.
Want to get to the clubhouse, I assume.
They want to drive in, absolutely.
So if they're parking over there and they want to get to the clubhouse on the other side, but you've got the traffic routing going in that way. I mean, they've got to be able to get over there safely.
Are we able to share the camera? I've got another exhibit that would show the alternate that might help illustrate there.
You do the overhead camera? I don't even know if it worked yet.
I didn't think that. So it shows when to.
Do some of the Sky Shuffler reference. That's what happened. Is he was trying to get through a space that was restricted. The police officer.
Cause we're bringing it up too. I think the one other comment I just, I might make is, I mean, certainly during the major championship events. That, that street is generally speaking closed. From a, from a, this pedestrian standpoint.
A wedding.
We do. Yep. We host weddings and you, from a parking standpoint and the entrance exit standpoint, I mean, it's pretty streamlined from a member guest perspective. As far as coming in the main entrance and exiting. As far as the pedestrian crossing and worried about the neighborhood, we feel like, again, having moved that entrance up significantly. We feel like we've done a good job of listening to the community of trying to eliminate the left-hand turn and what is occurring right now today. We think we're in a much better spot. Certainly the spot that we have that additional service exit. Is adjacent to Birdie Lane where there's four homes. So I mean, it's, it's quiet in that area. And when we talk about our day-to-day. We're talking about approximately six to eight deliveries on a given day. So it's not a high traffic experience. As far as what that congestion or pinpoint might potentially be.
Yeah, I'm not so much worried about. The amount of volume of, of delivery traffic. My worry is just getting people from the one point of the side, the parking lot. To the other side of the parking lot safely. And how does that happen?
Sorry, that guard gate is down further, right? Not up there.
So there, there's an exhibit that I'm passing around and I apologize. I didn't have a PDF to staff for this. But that shows the alternative if we were to close the far eastern access and how we have to open up the. Medium and the access point on the west side to achieve the same result that we're aiming for here, which is to keep. These trucks and, and buses separate from the, from the member and passenger car entrance. So what you end up with is cars routing or trucks routing for, through both parking areas from here. Into, into the other parking lot. So you don't. I, I understand this and we did eliminate some parking stalls here to, to allow for that movement, but you can't. The, the nature of how the clubhouse is designed with the dock here, you can't get, you can't get around that onsite conflicts. We believe the, the east access minimizes that necessary evil onsite.
Staff, I'm trying to under, is this even worth all this? I, I get what they're saying. You're not losing an entrance or an exit. It's just not a single like, and exit because you're going to exit by the guard gate. So we're, we're kind of chasing in circles here and I don't, I, I'm not understanding either side right now.
I, I think what staff is attempting to do. Is typically, I mean, it's atypical that we would have this many entrance and exit points for development in Chaska. Especially in this sort of proximity. And it's for the, the safety reasons that we're talking about, right? The more accesses, access points you have onto a roadway, the more conflict points that you introduce. And so we're always looking for ways to, to minimize that impact. I don't, I don't believe that options to eliminate this access have been thoroughly explored to this point. And so, you know, that can just presenting some options this evening that, I don't know that we've really fully vetted either. And so I think that's the intention here is to. You know, work towards a solution where we don't have a number of access points in proximity the, the way that they are.
I mean, one option that you guys would have as part of this, as, I mean, you're seeing, we're having things passed around here. That haven't been fully vetted out. One option you'd have would be to approve it, but to request staff to evaluate that more. And look at that and under, understand that and then bring back a recommendation for the final.
I was just going, so you're saying that these, this proposal is fairly new. We're just kind of getting at it, that we don't have it.
I think what Nate is saying is that the sort of the. We don't have it, we don't have these exhibits. These are.
You know, we don't have it. We don't have these exhibits. These are things that we're seeing for the first time too.
Could we approve it with like? You know, with the example exception of this piece to be worked out. I mean, or some something like that because it seems like it's.
I would suggest that you just i- if you're going to do it to just approve it with uh requesting staff to further look at work with the applicant to. Uh, look at this issue further and and come up with something we feel both feel comfortable with. I I don't I don't think that uh I don't think this is a a hill to die on sort of issue. And so I would I would highly suggest that that we that. Let us come back with with something after we have a chance to be able to work with the applicant on that and.
That's that's what I've been trying to understand. This isn't that big a deal. I don't know. I can't figure this out. What's going on here? I.
Would that mean that because usually the final comes on the consent? Would that mean that it would be more of an action item?
I think. The opportunity we have here is we're fortunate the applicant is uh coming forward with yet another project. Um, and we're working with them to uh, you know, at final have that that project's preliminary happen, right? And so. We've got multiple avenues here to uh.
I would just I I wouldn't overcomplicate this. I I think we're way, way overcomplicating this. Uh, and and I think. I think if if we have a chance to sit down and and uh work through this issue, I I I don't think it's going to be.
See, I.
It it's too tough to try to do it when we're sitting here.
It that's true. It goes back to us picking forty eight or fifty two, and that's what made I'm trying to figure out what.
Again, I mayor, I I want to just be clear on that. I it's not an either or question, right? We we came forward with two different resolutions, one reflecting staff's recommendation, the other fully reflecting planning commission. Hybrid is possible, right? So you can you all you have to do is just is just, you know. Go forward with a resolution of approval. And like you did with your previous approval, right? Amend that by adding conditions or clarifying conditions.
Would it be something like basically? Effectively like the staff, like the staff version, except instead of, you know. If with the exception of changing like nine and eleven, just basically say with the intent to um, you know, come to a resolution on the.
Well, I think you still have to have. I mean, you guys still have to give us some direction on the the trail side. Right. Um, but theoretically, what you're talking about is that you could just say. We approve the preliminary concept and would ask that staff uh go and look at whatever issue.
Nine. Yep. So the basic pick the one with the trail side we want and then figure out condition nine is the piece of it, right?
I think you were going to start talking about the trail. Now, I think that's why I just heard. I think we're just wanted to address get all four topics, certainly the entry, the importance and and it it's important to our, like I said, our stakeholders as well that we work with. Uh, the sprinkling of the buildings, that is our plans. We'll address that issue. Uh, and then certainly the just sidewalk component of things again. Uh, from a P M D twenty three standpoint, we don't are people that are coming on to our property are not exiting our property to to get on sidewalks. I think one of the biggest. Things that we are certainly, you know, passionate about is having a a safe community. We have two hundred and eight neighbors that live on the other side of the property. We would like to investigate further what that might look like on the other side. We feel like the sidewalk being on Hazelton Boulevard on our side, on south side. You're going to have to cross two hundred and eight neighbors are going to be crossing to get to our side on Hazelton Boulevard and then crossing again. Uh, comparatively to if we have it on the north side, we think that there's an opportunity to potentially cross once. So we'd like to explore that more with staff before we come back with it. Uh, we are opposed to having it on the south side. We can go into more detail on that, but I think our our intentions uh are to continue to work with the team on how we could come up with a good resolution and make that. A cohesive uh working environment there. So to clarify a comment that you made previously about that. You talked about not owning the property. And when I say not owning, does that mean the require the what they're exploring? Would be it would be Hazelton's responsibility to purchase that land.
Yep.
For that sidewalk. Is that not the city? The city is not purchasing that landfill, the sidewalk.
I mean, that's that if you wanna if you wanted to uh. Make it equitable with other developments in the community. Uh, it should not be a city expense to do that.
And I guess is that your understanding when you say explored? Is that your thought too? Like you're weighing the idea that you may be purchasing land? To build that sidewalk on the north side. Just to just to clarify because we're all on the same page.
You're not intending to purchase property on the other side. We would like to investigate that. We're willing to potentially share in the investment of what that might look like. Our our findings is that we do believe that there's potential enough room in the right away. We just want to explore that. With the team as far as what that might look like and feel like.
Either case, stuff needs to be put down there because that's what we currently do. Now, the question is where it goes, you know, from the equitable equitability perspective against other developments. I think the key thing here is that. The city all, you know, that's always been on the the new development to to front the burden of the cost for that.
Well, it's in it and on the property too, because you know, because. There's one property owner that we're working with that controls that property. Um, you know, I can't think of a single instance uh that we've shifted uh. Sidewalk or a trail across the road. Uh, because ultimately that side of the road has its own requirements. And, you know. That, you know, that they'd follow or in in this case, uh, you know, back when that area was developed in the. Nineteen nineties, uh, there was no requirement to to do that. Uh, and so that's why consequently you don't see a sidewalk for that.
That would be, yeah. And this is one of those things. I think consistency is really key because anytime we do something that's inconsistent, it creates. Resonant for it opens like can of worms around the rest of the community of like, why didn't we get it? How come we can't make the developer do that, right? So, yeah.
I mean, I'll just state my go ahead.
Talking about developers are, I think with the villa, again, we're coming on property. We don't have anyone exiting the property. I just want to be clear.
Anyone's disputing that notion.
They're not going to leave the villa to look for a sidewalk to go to the villa. We're going to have all that in house. I mean, we in your in the room, in the villa, inside of the clubhouse. We don't have people leaving, which is why we think this is a little bit different than a residential development. People are driving into the villa and they're not leaving. They're leaving. I get a bigger business issue.
I think I understand your clientele and and your members are a are a different demographic. And we would typically talk about sidewalk users, right? But. And I think that from like, you know, you said like two hundred and ninety or so neighbors on the other side, which I I don't disagree would probably be a predominantly bulk users of the sidewalk, but. There's this practical implication of, you know, you you own the land. They're not doing development. They're already established. That is acquisition cost. All this whole can of worms to do, which. Frankly, no one on the other side is expecting or looking for, and it's who's going to pay for it, right? Because from the city side, we're not going to look at not just them, but all taxpayers on the rest of the cities. Go fund that sidewalk on the other side. That's the challenge we're looking at from a practical perspective, right?
Yeah, I guess I'll just. I'm pretty transparent to individual. I am open and flexible and I understand the uniqueness of the entrance piece. Um, with my joke, uh, piece of it. This one I struggle with because it would be the rarest exception or never made. And I don't. I understand the uniqueness of clientele. I don't necessarily I it it also has to fit the neighborhood, right? It has to it has to blend in. You know, we just had. You I think you were in here when we were talking about the previous. Continuity of the community in the area. So like I said, I think, you know, I I appreciate, you know, your perspective and. And that clientele piece, but I'm just, you know, sharing my thoughts like that one's probably a hard like it's. I I can't see why we make it accepting for that and be unique. I'm open as you everyone in the council has heard me say I'm open on the traffic piece to figure that out in that entrance because. I think there's some uniqueness to that. I don't think there's uniqueness per se in the sidewalk issue. Again, that's just stating one person's opinion up here. Um, that slightly differs with what your thoughts are and I respect both sides, so.
Sure.
And I I mean, me honestly, I heard enough reasons already. We've already explored it. I I don't know what we could explore different. Other than talking to the the landowners and say, somebody asked to buy property for a sidewalk. So I I think. To me, we've explored the sidewalk and I think the south side is where it needs to be according to how we how we do business. Um, without without deviating and causing um issues for us down the road.
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. Um, the comment about property, so. Our plans show right of way on the north side that is horizontally sufficient to the sidewalk. Granted, there are vertical challenges portions. So there is, I unless I've missed something, there there is some. Exploration that we're not on the same page with their on whether or not it fits within the public right of way.
The north side of baseball. Well, we have right of ways on all sides of the road. Um, but that right away is for utilities. So I think that's what we've already. Uh, talked about is that there's there's utilities along that right away. So.
But we still have to acquire like that land isn't it's right away, but we. Put a sidewalk in. We're saying you have to acquire that land.
Yeah, I mean, because we have utilities are in right away and you don't, you know, we wouldn't put stuff over the top of that.
There are. Okay. And there are utilities in the south boulevard as well as that. So.
I don't know certain.
Yeah, I believe there are.
What utilities are there?
Let's try to figure out and sort it out. I I just this is we're not trying to we're not going to end this whole thing, right?
Agreed.
So.
I I think I think we've. Really, unless you have some comment that you hadn't that you want to bring forward, I think I think the sidewalk. Issue and the these access points, I think staff's going to have to sit down if, I mean, especially if. We didn't even have all the drawings and we got to pass around a drawing. That's not how we do business either. So I I mean, from my point, I think that. If you are done, I think that at this point I would ask for any other questions. I'd I'd ask for a motion on this. And it it sounds like most people are leaning toward. Staff's got to sit down with you and work out these two final details and the rest is a good to go. I mean. That's just where I am.
I think a final comment would just be, again, two hundred and eight residents. We're going to have them cross to get to the south side.
Biden are using that.
Correct. There and then where where are they going? They're heading to Starbucks or wherever it might go and they're going to cross again. So if that's that's what we're saying, they're crossing the thing Boulevard and they cross on the Mark Boulevard, cross twice.
But if the the sidewalks on that side, they still got to cross to go to Starbucks.
Yeah.
So it's it's.
It's still, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of a.
It's one cross. If you say if we got it down on the north, it'd be one cross coming across right in front of the loop.
One cross wherever you cut it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, okay, so. I'm going to try to craft a motion here. So the motion for let's say twenty twenty four forty eight, which is. Adopting preliminary site and building plan for Hazeltine Golf Course. Um, to keep condition number eleven to require pedestrian connection to the south side of Hazelton Boulevard with staff to work with. Um, Hazelton on access. Um, regarding, you know, item number nine. Is that fair?
That sounds very similar to what I heard you guys saying.
Because I think the I understand the flexibility where you guys are going with the access piece of it. So let's continue working on that piece and then the pedestrian piece. Keep on the south side. So that is my motion.
I'll second that.
Alright, so that's twenty, I'm just gonna say that's twenty twenty four dash forty eight.
Yep. Because that's.
Yes, pretty much, yeah.
I also add a modification to. Number sixteen that the final plans of the villas are tied with the preliminary plans. Of the performance.
It's tied with that. And so adding as a condition to that.
Right.
So they're their plans going on.
That way that we look at those things together. Right, okay.
Number sixteen is very specific in that the final plans are. Put together, but we're acceptable to the. Final plan of the villas going with the preliminary plans of the performance center.
Agreed. I concur.
Sure, I concur as well.
Alright, so so I have a motion by councilman along second by council member Hubbard. Restate your motion.
Okay, so it would be motion twenty twenty four forty eight.
That's like torture.
It's like. Who are we torturing?
Me, I think.
I think you.
I'm not sure.
I got that's okay. So can so this is resolution twenty twenty four forty eight. That requires um keeping condition number eleven to require pedestrian connections to the south side of Hazelton Boulevard and adding an item uh condition number sixteen to look at the um to look at the. Um, the preliminary um for the performance center together with this item. And then with a staff guidance for condition number nine to continue working on an acceptable access solution.
Yes.
Yes, a second.
Council, rest of the councils clear?
Yep.
Alright, okay, that's all I need. Alright, so we have a motion and second further discussion.
I just want to say thank you. I don't know if you realize that maybe this would be as detail oriented as you anticipated. Obviously appreciate Hazelton and his presence in the city of Chaska and the continued expansion investment. Uh, you know, and and again, I'm I'm confident that the city and everything will work out and. It'll continue to be a world class facility and and and. You know, continue the great partnership between the the sites. So, you know, sometimes we got we fully gotten in my opinion, the really nitty gritty of the details and. Um, you know, sometimes I like I said, I just don't really want to leave with a feeling like we. We talked about how far where a sidewalk could be or not be or and and right in exit, but. Again, appreciate your partnership and understanding and and being here tonight.
Yep, I agree. You know, very much appreciate your partnership and, you know, thank you for continue to be a continue to invest in our community along with us. So very much so.
I I agree. We probably got a little deep in the details, but that's what happens when they're not. When they're not part of our packet and things are are different, so um.
That's the preliminary one.
Yeah, and that that's kind of what we're in that in this piece for, so um. Um. Just gonna say something and now I lost it. But anyways, um. Uh. What we do on these projects like this is we we want to get it right. So that's why we might look at a little bit more and make sure that we are doing the right thing. So some council down the road isn't handcuffed in some way. So we're going to probably look into sometimes detail more than we need to. And maybe we should, but I I think we all have that same feeling. We got one shot at this. Let's do it right. So we're going to look at it. So appreciate that. Hopefully we weren't any worse than we were of anybody else, but just a lot of questions, so. Thanks for thanks for being here and thanks for helping us out, so. Alright, anyone else? Otherwise I got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Alright, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Alright, uh, we are moving to C. Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash oh forty nine and oh, oh, wait, we got to do a result. Yes, I'm sorry. We got to do an ordinance, yes. Uh, so I wouldn't I would look for a motion to adopt ordinance ten forty five approving the rezoning from. Open to plan multi-use district P D M P M D twenty three.
Promoted.
Motion by councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by councilmember Hatfield. Uh, again, this is adopting ordinance ten forty five approving the rezoning from open to planned multi-use district. Discussion. I don't think we need much more, do we?
No.
Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Alright, motion carries. Now we can move on. Am I good over there, Nate? Did I get everything? Alright, awesome.
I think so. You agree?
Alright, uh, H C is motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash oh forty nine and ordinance ten forty six. Approval of a preliminary plot and rezone and rezoning for Carlson Bluffs.
Mayor Carlson, this item used to be called Ensconced Woods, but we listened to one of the the conditions that you had last time. And said, oh, this should probably be re renamed to a new uh development. So this is a new Carlson Bluffs. Uh, which is basically sort of the Ensconced Woods second edition. So this uh is the uh rezoning and preliminary plat. Uh, that's being considered. Uh, it was recommended for approval from the planning commission and Ashley, are you taking this one? I I will make a comment. Uh, a bunch of us as staff. Walked down to this site uh today and I know you live out there. Walked down to this site, uh, today, and I know you live out there. That was the first time that I had walked all the way down there. That's pretty impressive down there. It's, I think, just the big woods, uh, that are down there and, uh.
That's the development that's occurring and now this will be a subdivision from.
It's, it's, I, I gotta say, I was very, very impressed with, with, uh, it's just, it's beautiful down there.
Did you roll down the big dirt hill?
I did not roll down the big dirt hill, but it been.
Glad we're infilling this neighborhood before there's any building going on.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh.
It's, it is a nice area. It's, you know, actually that whole area is. Really come together nicely, which is nice.
Yeah. So I'll turn it over to Ashley.
But feel free to stop me at any point if I'm going too quick. Uh, to make before you is a proposal by Johnson Ryland Homes at thirty six seventy five Big Woods Boulevard. Uh, it is a rezoning and a preliminary plat request. Uh, we are in the second phase of the three-step review process. Uh, as you know. This phase, uh, includes generally more. Details, uh, it includes civil plans and also some, uh, stormwater plans and reports. And we start to see issue resolution, uh, to some of the. Issues that were identified in that initial process. Uh, the project should have moved forward after tonight, uh, would come back again before you, uh, for final. Just a quick recap, uh, of the site. The site itself is fifteen and a half acres. Uh, there's pretty significant topography. Over the site, uh, there are three areas of steep slope, uh, that exceed eighteen percent. Uh, those three areas are highlighted in red on the screen before you. Uh, the highest point being on the west side of the property and, uh, the lowest point in the northern central. Uh, inventory trees within the disturbance area primarily include juniper and then the rest, uh, are a mix of ash elm and box elder species. In February, uh, the Ensconced Woods second edition concept plan came before you for fourteen lots and a five acre outlot. Uh, at that time, staff recommended the planning commission and city council concurred with that. Uh, to adjust the rear lot lines to align with the thirty foot no grade, no, no setback. Uh, the planning commission discussed continuity with the surrounding developments, setbacks and ghost plat. Uh, they also commented that the development is unique with the connection to the River Town Heights development to the west. You as the council, I saw late in February, you inquired about the notification area and construction timing as they relate to adjacent projects. Uh, you discussed steep slope requirements and proposed development setbacks. Uh, you expressed concern related to the development name and then also directed the applicant, uh, to work with staff. Regarding, uh, that rear lot line. So the proposal before you this evening, uh, generally is, uh. In alignment with the concept plan, but for, uh, those rear lot lines were adjusted as per requested by staff. Uh, so there are still fourteen single-family residential lots. Uh, they range from eleven thousand up to thirty one thousand square feet. Uh, those lot lines are, or lot sizes rather, are slightly less than what you saw as part of the concept plan. And again, that just reflects that rear lot line adjustment. Uh, the plat includes two outlots. Uh, the first is roughly six acres. Uh, it's outlot A. And north would be up to the right of the stream. Hmm, that would be retained by the current owner for future development. And then roughly two acre outlot on the north side. Outlot B, uh, would be for steep slope protection, de-ge-ticity. Uh, homes are consistent with what you saw as part of the concept plan. Uh, they would start, uh, roughly around in the eight hundreds, the three to four thousand square feet. Uh, and the mix of one and two stories. Uh, the setbacks are also consistent with what you saw as part of the concept plan review process. Uh, utilities and the streets would be connected, uh, from the west and pulled through the site. Uh, stormwater was anticipated. As part of the River Town Heights development, uh, so stormwater would be collected and directed towards those sedimentation ponds as part of. Uh, moving into the analysis, uh, current zoning is all for open development. Uh, the proposed zoning for the rezoning before you this evening is for planned residential districts, so PRD. Uh, comp plan is guided for low density and open space and the proposal before you this evening is in, uh, that range. Uh, lot configurations, just analyzing that, uh, they are. Again, consistent with what you saw as part of the concept plan, but for those adjusted rear lot lines. And again, setbacks consistent with, it's generally consistent with adjacent development, uh, and the concept plan, uh, that you approved in February. Uh, the planning commission reviewed the, this request, uh, earlier in this month, uh, May is flying by, but it still was this month. Uh, generally, the planning commission concurred that tree preservation was important. Uh, they did ask some just general questions about the. Primary tree species on the site. Uh, they appreciated the developers' work to adjust those rear lot lines, uh, as requested. They did ask some questions just about buffer signage. Uh, when it may, and then also how encroachment enforcements, uh, would happen if they were to happen. Uh, they did also discuss and confirm that the submitted ghost plat would not guarantee future approvals, uh, for that outlot and the adjacent property. And on an eight zero vote, uh, they recommended the city council approve the request. So that concludes my very brief presentation. I will turn it back to you, mayor, for any questions.
Questions, anyone? So. Can you, can you put up the lot, the plot? So are, are one of those lots, I thought it said outlot, but I can't read that. Is that the outlot to the Carlson property?
Uh, yes, so there's outlot A, and again, north is to the right.
Is it outlot A? Right there?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And so if you recall, as part of the concept plan review process, the, the ghost plat contemplated, uh, what you can see here is some additional lots and then. We had the same problem, I think it auto adjusts or auto moves forward, um. The, there were ghost plats for lots within this outlot and then also, uh, on that twenty acre pro- property just to the east. But that was contingent on, uh, the development of the lotto property as well.
Wasn't that a temporary access for Carlson? And then once this developed, there was gonna be access out to the roadway? Am I getting that wrong?
Uh, the ghost plat contemplated some connection to the south through the lotto property. And you're correct, so the, the development of that outlot A and that adjacent property was contingent on, uh, that.
There's no access to this roadway from outlot A, correct?
Uh, from the roadway that is the looped roadway, is this?
This, this roadway, whatever that road is right there, there is no access from outlot A to that road.
Correct.
But I thought that was the goal of her building on the bluffs. That she would ultimately have access to this roadway.
This is a different development.
Yeah, mayor, I.
There another one?
Yes.
Oh, never mind, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought it was this one.
Yeah, yep, so the, what you're thinking about, Mark, um, mayor, Mark.
I'm good with that.
Is, as you're looking at the map here, um. Eastward of this development, closer to Shram Brewery. Is where, uh, Mrs. Carlson is intending.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry, I thought it was this piece, so, alright, we can move on now, I'm, I get it.
Black sidewalks.
Uh. Sidewalks were good. Put them in on both sites. Is there? Are you guys planning that, because you're a different name, are you planning, uh, like entrance monuments to your area? I think we had this conversation once. Yeah, come on up.
Can you guys elaborate? Why? Because I wasn't at this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Paul Ryland, Johnson Ryland Builders and, and now Carlson Bluffs. Um, we currently are not imagining, uh, the monuments. Um. It seemed like that was one of the things in the last meeting was, there was a desire, there was. It didn't seem like this council wanted to see the monuments, so we just kind of pulled it off. We actually thought it was something you would want to, so. We were never that connected to it, so.
There's no monument at, at the current Ensconced Wood, is there? I don't believe.
There is not a monument in the current Ensconced, correct.
And the only reason I asked because now it's Johnson. Or Carlson, excuse me. Uh, and that, you know, it's like where you go in your area, that's.
I was just gonna say what.
I don't know if it's the right thing or the wrong thing.
I, I gotta say personally. Uh, between Sagewood and the rest of Clover Ridge, where I'm at, there is monument.
I know, that's what I'm thinking.
Honestly, I think it's sort of stupid.
Okay. This, this because, this half moon, I mean, all of a sudden, it's.
It feels.
Houses or whatever it is.
And then you leave and it's like, thanks for visiting.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not like, it's, it's not like this, the whole, like, large neighborhood and like, part of the community, that's a different thing, right?
When it's all on one street, it just doesn't feel right.
That's what I didn't know, if that's a requirement, and that's why I'm asking, so. I don't, it does not, um, that's not anything I need to discuss. I was just curious if it was happening.
Councilmember Hubbard would question the name change, right?
Yeah, I was, I was, I was out of town.
I was vocal on that, so I'll, I'll speak to that, uh, cause I live in this area. So I think the logic was, I don't know if there's a good map to show it. But there is to the northeast of this property, there is a current Ensconced Woods. Um, and the fact, I think there was concern over confusion because they're not physically going to, would be connected. There's no, you'd have to go through Founder's Ridge to get it. So there was concerns about.
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding, fire, police. If people say, yeah, I'm in Ensconced Wood, you know, now there's not gonna be a monument, so I think there, there just didn't seem to be any reason to have to copy that name. Because they weren't interconnected.
Sure.
And so, um, you know, my comment was, if that was the hardest thing we asked you to do. It lines up pretty well and I appreciate you, you taking it, because it seems. Artificially silly sometimes to worry about what we're gonna call this, but I think it did matter. But that was the logic is that. You had two neighborhoods that weren't gonna be connected. Now, they're not far from each other, which maybe actually makes it worse.
Can't get there.
You can't get to, there, there'd be no way to access them to.
I just was curious.
That was, that was the conversation.
She was saying I was, I don't remember, this is when I looked at the date. Oh yeah, that's why.
Anyone else have? Comments, questions, concerns?
I, yeah, I think it, I appreciate you taking our, that, that simple feedback and adjusting it and. I think it looks nice. I think it's a nice area. It really, that, like I said, I commented that whole space out there. Um, you know, I think the neighborhood will be glad when the dirt pile, I joke, well, the dirt pile, um, the dirt pile goes away and I know that will, and this will help that, right? Um, so I think I appreciate that, but yeah, I, I, I don't have any issues. I think it fits really nice and that's, it's, it's. Be some really unique houses that will probably get built and just like this Scott once that I stare, my. Wife will suggest that we look at moving down the road and I'm gonna tell her, nope, we're staying here, but, um. Yeah, there's, there's some nice spaces out there, so it'll be, it'll be exciting. Anyone else?
You know, just like you guys have built like really good quality product in Chaska and we certainly appreciate you continuing to develop more and. You know, make some beautiful homes for some families who are, you know, looking for something a little different within the same area. So, you know, thank you for continuing to invest in Chaska.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to see it filled, because then, like I said, we went, you sat here through this infill stuff that happens is very challenging.
And you can imagine how cranky I'll be in twenty years.
Much easier to, uh, complete these, um.
That's good.
Complete everything as, as right as it goes, so. Alright, uh, does someone want to make a motion on, on, on twenty twenty four dash forty nine?
I'll make a motion, or do you want to, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four forty, forty nine?
I could second that.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Gra, again, resolution twenty twenty four dash forty nine. Which is approval of preliminary plat. For the Carlson Bluffs. Formerly Ensconced Woods. Discussion. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Now I need. Motion for ordinance ten forty six, and that's all I got, and. Can't find it in here. I know it's moving it from open to, uh. PMD.
Pure, the planned residential district.
PRD eighty seven.
Eighty seven, okay, because I had it somewhere in here and I can't find it, so. Alright, I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to.
It all, yeah.
Uh. Sorry.
Yeah, I disappeared.
To rezone. From open to PRD eighty seven.
Okay.
I found it.
Out of motion, did I get a second?
Second.
Second, motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Gra. Uh, further discussion. On, uh, again, that's for ordinance ten forty six. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, we are on D, uh. Record. Yeah.
Wait, can we put the next item first before?
Uh, next one is recum. Recommend city council approval of Chaska Community Center Master Plan. I gotta go get water.
Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is, uh, the final report coming back from our, uh, Community Center Master Plan Task Force. Uh, which, uh, met over the last couple of years to really come up with a, a plan for where we go with the community center going into the future. And they'll talk about different phases of plan, uh, we, uh. We have two, uh, members of the, uh, of the group. We had three, but he must feel like, he must have fell asleep or something.
Children to get to.
Yeah, children to get to. Uh, well, we did have Zach Sussarig, just to give him credit for being here. Uh, and then Todd Urbansky and then Donell Hi-Hi, uh, from the group and a, a couple council members that were on the, the group as well and then our parking wreck tractor, uh, Marshall Grange. Um, uh, we're gonna go through, I got a presentation, the master plan, uh, and then the intent. Uh, is to have the city council consider the adoption of the master plan so that that can really sort of put things in motion. Uh, for us to, uh, look at how we move forward, to start doing the things to, to move forward with, with implement. Implementing this as we move into the future. So for that, I'll turn it over to Marshall.
Alright, thank you, Matt, and good evening, uh, mayor and council. Uh, happy to be before you tonight talking about the, the master plan for the Chaska Community Center, um. So the full detailed hundred and thirty some page report was in, in your packet and, uh, what's that?
So we're gonna read this word for word.
Um, so we're here tonight really to kind of provide the highlight reel. Um, for you, so you get a, a sense of the direction we're going and then, um, for the. The members of the task force here to provide their recommendation for you going forward. Um, so with that, I'd like to start out by really acknowledging and thanking, um, the variety of people who helped create this plan, um, from the beginning. Um, so first off, the citizen task force, um, that you all, um, assigned to this project. And so the makeup of this task force included a couple of our city council members, John Gra and Taylor Hubbard. Uh, Parks and Recreation Commission members, we had Rhoda Hassan, who also, uh, represented us, uh, from a youth perspective. Donal Hi-Hi and Zach Zeresig. On the planning commission, we had Todd Urbansky. With the Human Rights Commission, we had Martin Hubbard. Uh, we had a couple individuals from the school district and Sue Harberts and Jeff Ross. And then we had, um, a handful of community center members, Rachel Hernandez. Ronak Jagi, Ellie Kramer, Dave Rone and Jaclyn Branacar. And then we had some general community members, um, that weren't, that aren't members of the community center, which was Medina Abshire. Angie Bolstead, Grecia Lozano and Mac Willenson. Um, and kind of interesting to point out with Mac, he served on the original task force when the first.
Heard that name and I went, what?
The center was built and so he brought. Really good perspective to the group. Really good perspective to the group. Um, so really wanna thank the task force for their time and commitment throughout this project. Um, and then we also had a project management team that consisted of a variety of staff, um, across multiple departments. Um, providing input into the plan, um, working really kind of between the task force and the, um, consultant group team that we, um, that we brought on. And that consultant group, uh, was Perkins and Will, um, the lead can, uh, lead project. Principal was Chris Costelik, and then we also had John Slack and Catherine Watson. Um, so they were the primaries, um, staff members that we worked with, and then they utilized, uh, several sub consultant groups. Um, a variety of engineering firms, along with, um, Ballard King, who they really did a lot of the market analysis and, and operation. Analysis, and then we also, uh, utilized RJM Construction. Um, and they primarily provided cost estimation, um, going into the plan. And then lastly, we really just wanna thank the community. We'll get into a little bit about the engagement process that took place, but. It was really the participation of those in the community that provided feedback, um, that, that helped shape this plan. Um, amongst a variety of other, um, inputs that went into it. And then the reason why we created the, the master plan, um. It was back in late 2021, when I became, came before the city council. And, uh, made the recommendation that we develop this plan. It was, uh, that year when the community center had turned 30 years old. Um, and so I think just the fact that the facility is aging. Uh, there hasn't been a funding source for depreciation, and we're starting to see several, um, deferred maintenance items. Um, sort of present themselves as, as, uh, large mechanical equipment. Tends to reach its, reach its end of life, you know, at that 30-year mark, and so we found ourselves a little bit in a reaction mode. And felt like developing a master plan to really kind of wrap our heads around, um, the deferred maintenance and what it would take to. Get up to speed with that would be important. Um. We also heard a lot, we get a lot of feedback about the parking lot challenges at the community center. It was, you know, when we went through the process. Uh, it was by far probably the top, top piece of feedback, uh, that we got. And then, um, you know, as we are embarking on this plan, you know, I think it was opportunistic for us to also recognize that. Over 30 years, recreation trends change, um, and then also the community demographics have changed. I think in 1991, when the facility was built, uh, we had a population of about 11,000 people, so you can just. Imagine, and you've seen how we've grown and we've changed demographically, and so. Really wanted to take that opportunity to engage our residents and understand, uh, what they would like to see in this facility, um, going forward. And, and, uh, and another kind of big piece of the why we wanna do this master plan. Was to continue to provide the great service that that facility is, uh, providing to the community. Um, we see over 1 million visitors come through that building on an annual basis. And this slide here is just, um, reflecting a snapshot of the variety of different user groups, um, that access and utilize that facility. So I think it's just a plan that, um, provides a vision for us into the future, and. Really kind of setting the stage for us to look at reinvesting back into this facility, so we can continue to, um. You know, provide that service level that people are wanting. So with that, I'm gonna turn it now over to Danell Hihi, who's gonna talk.
Before.
About the planning process.
I like this one, less angry now.
Pull up the, pull up the right talk. You know, don't follow the she had before.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm so. And I apologize, I'm gonna be reading off the prompter, I did not memorize this, of the planning process, next slide. Um, part of the planning process was looking at how is the building doing now? What sort of site analysis is there, um? Looking at the larger market, do, would we have more people that we could pull in if we were to make improvements? Um, existing program evaluation, are we utilizing our space that's the most effective as we can right now? Um, of course, seeing what the community wanted, developing this master plan concept, um, looking at how much it costs. And then also looking at whether or not, um, the community center should continue to operate as an enterprise fund, or is there something that would work better in the future? Next slide. Um, the community engagement across the last two years was fabulous. The two open house events were very well attended. Residents did not hold back in giving, um, effusive praise, as well as criticism to the offerings of the community center. I think we had to start saying that yes, parking will be addressed before we said anything else going forward. Um, there were online surveys, 12 user group meetings, including lease tenants, school district, library, the active older adults. Um, meetings with city managers for Chan, Hassan, Victorian, Carver, informational booths at several community events, and then also a project website, as well as social media. Top themes across all groups were pretty similar, um, improving safety of parking lot, increased parking capacity, of course, was number one. Um, expanding the fitness center and adding more workout variety was number two. People were really sad when we had to move everything back together post-COVID. Um, improving the pool area with new features, more lap swimming and fixing the hot tub, that broken hot tub's pretty big eyes orb. Improved locker rooms, especially the family locker rooms was consistent theme, larger and more exciting indoor playground. Improving the ice arena with more lobby area, seating locker rooms and better support services. I'd say that the hockey families were very, very, um. Engaged in this process. Adding more gym space, improving the flow of the main entrance lobby, we have a lot of access points to the building right now. Um, better use of the theater. More programming areas for teens and young adults, that's also been a consistent theme for beyond just this project. Um, then taking care of deferred maintenance and replacing the roof, of course. The task force was able to get together and come up with some guiding principles and objectives after some of these community events. We wanted to reinvest in the multipurpose facility, not start new, reinvest in our existing building. Um, to continue serving as a community recreation gathering place into the future, so can we grow this facility with what we have? Um, welcoming people of all cultural and economic backgrounds, ages and abilities and interests to access a facility that improves the health and wellness of both individuals and the community. So that's community gathering space as well as recreation. Create experiences that build community, foster a sense of pride, and develop lifelong memories. I know, Taylor, you've shared your story several times about growing up in the community center, and there were other. Community members that had similar memories that they shared with us. Planning for deferred maintenance items, of course, um, addressing current parking lot challenges by looking at the entire campus and other opportunities. There's other parking opportunities across the street as well, but the access between the two is pretty dangerous and poorly lit at this point. Um, repurposing and redesigning underutilized areas of the building to maximize the space that exists. Something that stood out to me in this whole process is when they evaluated the square footage of the building and. The population we had at the time when it was built, they said, it's crazy, we would never have recommended building a facility this large with the population that we had at the time. And that really gave me a lot of hope that we can better utilize what we have, set it up better, so that it works better for people going in the future. Resigning multiple use spaces that can meet the changing needs of the community, respond to extensive community input and feedback. Continuing to have an arts presence in the community center was identified as important, and improving circulation through the building while also reducing the number of entry points into the building. I think, again, there's way too many entrances. Um, connecting to nature by capturing the views of the Minnesota River Valley, we have, that's very underutilized, except for at the lodge. Um, adding storage in strategic locations, determining the operating expenses and cost allocations going forward. Evaluate current programming performance metrics and trends to have guide future operations and building design. Um, determining the proper mix of revenue sources, and then defining financing strategies to fund the building improvements that are recommended in this plan. And I can just keep rolling with it a little bit here.
Dig on.
Till I fall over.
All right.
So Zach, I am Zach now. I'm not quite as funny, but here I am. Um, this is a very large overview. This slide is meant to show that we really looked at the building and bisected it by a pay-to-play sort of, uh, model, and then the more community model. So in the yellow, you would see people would come in, that's where you have community meetings, you have theater performances, um, that's maybe where. Uh, some offices are, that's where like a teen space could be, and then everything over, um. To my right, which is in the green, you would go past that front desk, and that's more where there's a programming that you've paid for, or perhaps you're a member, um, or there's tournaments of that sort. If I miss anything.
Those.
Um, again, this is a hu, uh, very, very tiny snapshot, and we'll go into more detail later. But what you're meant to see here is on the right, the gray on the top left is our current building and what's utilized, and then to the right of that is. How we would change those areas, and again, we will look at this in more detail. Lower left is the lower level floor plan, and then lower right is kind of how we would reconfigure those. And this is an overview of phases one, two, three, and future. And so Todd will go over what those phases are and what those associated costs are, and then we will say which phases, um. The task force is actually recommending we move forward with. So this is the main level, entry level. Different identified spaces and what we came together and decided we would change to better utilize the space. I'm just gonna hit on a few takeaways, and that is relocating that front desk, so you're no longer kind of walking past it and have to turn around and look at it. It would instead be off to the left when you walk in, a little bit more central, people are greeting you, you kind of can't skirt by them. Um, relocating the stairs, and including those stairs going up to the track, so you don't have to see if gamble and see if the elevator works or not. Um, raising that lower level gym, so it's on the same level as the, the single gym. Um, expanding an indoor playground, which is in red. New restrooms and sensory room that would be connected to that. Renovating the theater to a flat floor, we decided that might, uh, we might be able to put more programming in there if it's not sloped. Um, converting the parking rec office space to possibly an arts and innovation lab, and, uh, maybe meeting with some teen groups and seeing what sort of programming they'd like to see happen there. More storage, and a gym addition to the building, which is. Number 13, which you can't really see, but there is a little gym addition there, and that would be part of phase three, that specific addition. So that's the main level, this is the lower level, and some highlights is a new multipurpose recreation. Area where you could have more fitness, because we would be raising that gym floor up. Conver, converting the racquetball courts to expanded group fitness. Um, a renovated dry locker room, if you will, uh. Right at the bottom of the stairs, but also renovating the wet locker rooms to where there's more, it's a little bit more family friendly. Relocating a member, the member child area to where, um. Breakaway is at this point in time. We would actually move the water slide, we're proposing moving it to the external of the building, number one, you can see it, people might go, wow, what's that? I wanna go check that place out, but also, um, it frees up a whole lot of deck space, you don't have to walk past it. Um, moving the hot tub and fixing the hot tub. Um, and then a fitness area addition to the back of the building, which again, that is part of, that particular item would be part of phase three.
I didn't know hot tubs are supposed to work.
I know, right?
It's a new thing?
Yes.
Just checking. Asking for Taylor.
We're gonna name the slide, Mark's slide on the. I'm not touching that.
I think it should be the hot tub, you did your videotape on that.
Actually, cold tubs are the new thing, so we might be ahead of the trend right now.
All ice baths, yeah.
I'll try and keep this to a couple hours or less here. Well, arguing into my part, I wanna say, so I've been a, a, I've lived in Chaska now since 2017. Uh, but had my first experience in the community center back in the late 90s. I was a member of another city council, Han, uh, City Hannover, and we came out to look at the Clover Ridge development. Uh, we had a developer that wanted to do something similar in our community. Took a little bus out here, got out here, we spent, uh, an hour driving through Clover Ridge, went back over to the community center, sat down there for a half hour or so. The only thing we talked about on the bus ride back was the community center. How cool it would be to have one of those, and so sometimes we look at something like that, we're too close to it. It's, uh, we don't realize the asset we have, uh, until we don't have it anymore. Um, so with that, small little ask here. Um, phase one, uh, which really kind of covers, it covers the, 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 um. The, um. Deferred maintenance, the parking lot, and a little bit of the lobby change around, um, total cost on that's about 23 million. Um. What we're looking at there is really kind of a, if, I won't read everything there to you, but you're, you're really, you know, you. We're getting rid of the, uh, the parking issues that we have. Changing the lobby slightly and getting rid of all the deferred maintenance, which is really gonna be kind of a very similar building to what we have right now. They'll have new paint, they'll have new carpet, but it's not gonna really be functionally any different than what we have right now. Um, and so what we're looking at doing is trying to increase the revenue opportunities that we have with the new design by increasing the size of the gyms. Um. Flattening the floor in the auditorium, um, so that we can bring in more groups, more users, more tournaments, more people. Um, so that we can start to, you know, it, it's not gonna cover the cost of it, but it's gonna help. Uh, when we look at, oops, sorry, I go back, um, phase two, yep. So there you, you, I think everybody has seen this new parking concept, haven't they? So we won't spend any more time there. Uh, phase two, the recommendation, that cost is 32.0, almost 4 million. And I think the next slide goes into more details on that. Good, um, so that is raising and lowering the le, the lower, raising the lower level gym to the entry level. So you'll have two gyms next to each other, uh, allows us to do more things there, also increases revenue opportunities. Um, then we have a large space underneath it, which is, is, will be greatly appreciated by the entire community. That was one of the things that we were. The most about was increasing the fitness space and having more equipment there. Um, it will allow for an aquatic area expansion and remodel, relocate the water slide to the outside of the building. Uh, increase the deck space sightlines, which will increase safety as well, um. Uh, expand the indoor playground, which is a huge for lots of young children, ages one to 10 right now. Birthday parties are a huge thing at these indoor playgrounds, as well as all sorts of family events. Uh, convert the racquetball courts to group exercise rooms. The ice arena lobby expansion, we'll be moving the lobby for the ice arena all the way to the far north end. Um, so we'll actually, in the parking lot, have a separate entrance for the community center, and more of a separate entrance for the hockey area, so that we get rid of some of that traffic. Uh, which would be, which is one of our biggest, um, headaches right now. Uh, up, uh, updating the meeting rooms and bringing them into the, uh, into 2027, uh, whatever, uh. Technology looks like then. Multipurpose recreation, uh, being able to have some group classes, we don't have space for that currently, there's a little big demand for that. Uh, moving offices, remodeling the theater, and, um. As Danell said, creating the, creating the fitness locker rooms, both for a separate, what, wet and dry programs. Phase three, um, we originally went into this without trying to expand the, the, the building and working with the footprint that we had. Um, but after a lot of discussion, um, we felt that for a cost of 10.6 million, adding a third gymnasium at the same levels of first two. Opens up a lot of fitness space underneath there also, gives us a lot of different opportunities for revenue, um. You can, we'll be able to do tournaments there, pickleball's a huge thing right now, for every basketball court, I think you can get four pickleball courts on it. Um, so we'll have the opportunities for a lot more area there. For, in my mind, the big thing with this is we wanna take advantage of that view of the Minnesota River Valley. So in phase two, by, uh, bringing that lower gym up to the main gym and creating that space underneath of it, then we would make that a big wall of glass, basically, looking out. Over the, uh, Minnesota River Valley. If we were to put this off and do it later, we're gonna come in and demo that whole wall of glass that we just built five years ago, or 10 years ago, or whatever it is. And have to reconstruct it, and the price is just gonna be astronomical at that point. Uh, much easier to do at the time of recon, uh, at the time of raising that, um. That second level gym, or that basement level gym right now. Uh, so that was the only expansion that we looked at on there. Next slide. Um.
You hit on all that.
Yeah, I think we've covered all that already. Um, phase four had a cost of 10.235 million. Was the, uh, uh, addition of the pool and expanded deck area on the exterior. Was the, uh, uh, addition of the pool and expanded deck area on the exterior of the building. At this time, we just felt it wasn't prudent, um, as well as our cost effective. Um, and that is something that can be added later. Um, and so we just decided to put that kind of on the back burner at this moment. Next slide. And so citizen task force rec- uh, recommendation. Phases one to three to be included in this. Uh, comes up to about seventy point two million dollars. That's twenty-two-seven dollars. So we did look into the future there. Uh, and that includes pretty much everything. That's furniture, that's carpet, that's extra workout equipment. Um, and, um, um, nothing else would, would be, would be added onto that. Um, and that's a ten or fifteen percent contingency fund then also.
Yup, yup. There's a contingency on the, the design and contingency on the construction.
Yup. So it's, it's big dollars and I, you know, we're in a situation right now where we got a lot of big dollars going towards city buildings. Um, I've said this before, um, but we're building a new fire station, police, uh, campus. We're doing public works. We're gonna have a renovation of city hall. All buildings that need to be done, all buildings that need to be touched, but most of our, uh, most of our citizens will never step foot inside the police station. They'll never step foot inside the fire station. Some of them will come to city hall and fill our room here. Um, but a lot of our citizens go into the community center. And so this is the one thing that they can kind of take, uh, and, 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 and be proud of and, and look at as an asset for living in, in our community. But with that, um, any questions?
You know, one thing I will mention. I know it was talked about earlier on the presentation that we had discussions with other city managers and Chan Hason, Victoria and Carver. Um, it does now, it looked like the city of Chan Hason is gonna go for a referendum. Uh, for doing, uh, at first it looked like it was gonna be an ice arena. It's starting to feel a lot more like a community center now.
He talked about it today.
We had a couple council members at the, from Chan Hason. At the class thing we were at.
And that'd be a, yeah.
Talked about like a walking track and a, like an indoor gym space, not anything pool related, but yup, couple sheets.
I think there's a fitness component to it.
Yeah, there is, there's.
But it's, uh, you know, what they're, uh, you know, they were given authorization, uh, by the state uh, to seek a referendum for a sales tax. Uh, not, well, it would have been last, last sessions. Um.
They get it.
Yeah, they did. Um, you know, they still have to go over a referendum to actually, uh, go for it. Uh, but, uh, that is something that looks like they're going to do. Um, if anybody was a geek like me and stayed up late last night to see what happened with the, uh, um, nothing did. Uh, so then I really felt like a sucker because I stayed up and watched it, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, was talked about quite extensively during this session was actually revamping the uh, local option sales tax. And, uh, there was a recommendation that came from a task force, uh, that included a number of different people, uh, that would, uh, would allow, uh, cities to have the automatic right to go for a referendum for a community center, um, if that were to pass. Uh, the house side, uh, of the aisle, uh, they were very restrictive uh, on things, but the senate side, uh, did have community centers are included. Um, we, I mean, the hope is, uh, I think by a lot of cities that, that that's going to get resurrected uh, again, next session. Um, but, um, you know, that, it, you know, if we were, obviously one thing we have to do in a for the, to look at, you know, what are ways that we potentially pay, uh, for, for this? Uh, that's one that is a po- potential option and one that, um, you know, is getting discussion at the uh, at the capital. So, um, so something that we're gonna continue to monitor as we go into next year, but I do think that they're, depending on how the elections go, I do think they are gonna sort of pick up that discussion uh, again, next year.
Thing that stuck so, stuck out from when we had this conversation as a task force, um, and it's not an easy decision by any means. But, and I, and correct me if I get the numbers wrong, but I think there's, you know, when people have asked me, because I've been asked questions, that's gonna be a big price tag. And it's like, well, it's a master plan. We understand that, that, you know, we're not, we're not authorized if you start shoveling now. Um, you know, I think the first question as a community member is, do you believe we should have a community center? Right? We, we talked about that as a task force, right? And for some people that might be none. It, it, that could be. And, and interestingly, if that's the answer, nothing after that really matters, right? Because you're not gonna worry about funding it. Um, and, and I accept that reality. You know, I think I'd be shocked if that was the majority opinion. Um, then I think it comes down to, it's like, okay, yes, but hop, right? And the numbers that you said that kind of really stuck out to me and it came up a little bit today, actually with the, uh, the seventh grade class, a little bit about Costco as an example. Um, is on the sales tax piece, they gotta balance that. But I think the numbers you shared is that the preliminary data kind of study that it's like sixty percent of the sales in the city of Chaska from outside of Chaska residents.
Yeah, we actually had Michaela, uh, do the analysis for us. Man, that was, is, it was a few years ago now, so. And so, you know, that doesn't include Costco. And, you know, I always tell people with that is like, um, you know, if you have the choice of paying a hundred percent.
That's where it was going.
Yeah, if you have the choice of paying a hundred percent of the improvement or paying forty percent of the improvement. Uh, and being able to capture some of the value that's coming into the community. Um, you know, to me, that's really sort of the question you're asking, uh, uh, people, uh, you know, when they're considering something like that. Um, that, that percentage I'm confident is going to go up, uh, as Costco opens up because a good portion of their market is gonna come from outside of the community. Um, but, uh, i- i- yeah, it, it's just one of those things to, to consider.
Yeah, as I said, it's, it's something I stuck on. Now I, you know, fully appreciate perspective too of, of the burden that creates for local businesses to charge that and, you know, similar like services and while I could go next door, next community and pay less for the same service because it's there. I see you Taylor. Um.
I can't believe you threw that in there.
I know, and I appreciate that. So there's a balance, but it is what, that's the one thing that kind of stuck out through me with, with that sales tax option because, um, it unfortunately, things are expensive and there's no magic solution, right? Like, um, you know, we're not gonna, you know, the city's not winning the lottery anytime soon, right? So, but I think it's appreciative, but, but I really like that perspective of like, okay, the first question is, do you want it? Does it value? And then it's like, okay, let's think of solutions. And I think there's probably other solutions that are out there that we'll continue to explore. Um, but again, I'm just making it clear, like, you know, as we all know, we're not acting on that dollar tonight. Um, and, you know, we'll continue to explore how that fund, you know, moves forward.
I think that one of the things that's really important in public finance too, to keep it, to keep in mind is that you've really, you know, there's a cost. And really what we try to do in the public sector is allocate that cost to the right people. Uh, who are the people that are actually utilizing the services being provided? When we talk about, you know, the general fund facilities like city hall or police and fire station, uh, or municipal service building, the users of that cert- those services are residents. Um, and so our residents should pay for the services that they provide or are provided. With the community center, on the other hand, uh, we have a lot of people who aren't Chaska residents who utilize the community center, uh, as members or daily users. And so, you know, one of the discussions that's happened at the, at the state level with local option sales taxes, um, you know, they're looking at sales tax to support regional acts, assets. Because you're really saying that it's not just your residents who are utilizing the facility, it's other people who are coming from outside of the community.
Um, I'll just make a few comments, uh, being the other council member on the task force. First, uh, I want to thank, uh, Todd and Anell and Zach. For being here tonight. It was a, it was a long meeting and you guys sat through, um, you know, all of the different, um, you know, planning commission items and, um, to make the presentation. And thank you, Marshall, for putting that together and really just all the hard work that you have done to present the idea to, you know, plan and gather everything, you know, work with, um, all the teams that put this together. This whole process, um, has just been wonderful. Uh, wonderful to be able to first find a body of, um, participants that I feel like really represent the community. We had members and non-members. We had old and young. You know, we had, um, different diversity makeup in any sort of capacity that we could find. Uh, to really hopefully gather all the voices to the table. And then the process was, you know, to set a guiding principle and to lay out a mission for kind of interacting with the public to gather their input. And the public showed, you know, we had a few open houses and the sky was the limit. No comment or suggestion was off the table. And then we dug deep and looked at the economics of what gives the community center the most bang for its dollar, basically. What areas of the community center are, you know, are worth, uh, investing in and which ones maybe aren't as much? And we had to make some really hard decisions. Um, the, you know, few racquetball users sadly enough, I, you know, were on the short end of that decision-making, but you had to reevaluate and nothing was sacred. Um, and so as the plan came together and the, the, the report came out, uh, I should back up for a second. The, well, the report came out, but even before that, the layout of what the architectural firm and the project, um, leads had come up with was amazing. To really honestly be able to reconfigure a thirty-year-old space into something that is lively and fresh and serves the, the trends, I guess you could say of today, but also versatile enough that it can be useful for the, you know, the next thirty years plus if it needs to be reconfigured. I mean, those were all taken into account and really those last two phases just had uh, you know, some additions on, but those were even like, well, if, if this is something, you know, they were, they were pieced out, like we could do it or we could table it. Um, and then when the report came out, even just the information that was in there, looking at other, um, similar communities and looking at their community centers and how they're funded and how their maintenance is funded. I think those are really important elements that we dissected down, not just to say, hey, you know, we want to renovate this space and we want to do big things with it for our community, but to say, we want to do this. We want to do it right. We want to make sure the community is all together and their inputs are valued. But we also want to set it up for a legacy of success to grow beyond. And so hopefully, as you know, we talk a lot about future councils sitting up here, that they don't have to make hard decisions, um, as hard of a decision in regards to the community center for the future. And that's what I feel like is really important as I sit here now, to make those hard decisions. So hopefully it paves a way for that to be a lot easier down the line. So with that being said, I'm very excited to see this come forward today. And I just want to make sure that everybody that was involved, task force staff, everybody just knows my deep appreciation. Because this was, this was one of the things that I ran on as a platform to be on this council was I saw the want and desire to reinvest back into that space. And I'm excited for when that happens. I told my husband jokingly, when one of the lotteries was big not that long ago, I was like, if I win the lottery, I'm gonna give a big chunk of it to the community center. And he thought I was the biggest nerd for saying that. But I really do. I'm just very passionate about that space. It's, it's such a great space, but, um, crossing my fingers, we can do the funny mechanism, but, you know, we're here now and I'm excited to, to at least keep the ball rolling.
You're on record for that donation now.
Oh, that's true.
Yup.
I'm not a very lucky person though, so I can say those sort of things.
On record is you're still a nerd.
So, well, I'm okay with that.
Do you have more, Marshall? I'm not sure where you're at here.
You know, I think just finish by again, acknowledging the task force. I think they did their job in really developing this plan and this vision for now, you know, cans, for now council and us staff to figure out how to implement it. That's kind of where we're at. And there's a lot of next steps to get to actually implementation. You know, but I think some of the things that we as staff are talking about is, you know, getting creative with, understanding what some of those other financing tools could be. Like we talked about with the, uh, local sales tax. Um, I think there's probably some opportunity in our upcoming community survey. Maybe to, to, to get at, you know, how the residents value this facility and continue to just sort of strategize and figure out how we can implement this plan over time.
Well, I, I don't think there's much more that needs to be, be said here other. That was a monumental task to come up with, try to figure out what everyone's needs are. And, and looking, as, as we've talked about, looking for the future of, of what a community center needs to have, you know. Uh, thinking back to, what was that, about ninety-three?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one. I mean, look at how things have changed. And yet we can still stay inside the building. We just need to fix the inside of the building. Um, and I think that, that's important. I mean, you, you look at, I, I've been just kind of scrolling here, look at these other community centers. I don't know if they had costs, but um, just knowing construction now, what did we say that would be if we?
About seven.
About seventy million. I mean, think about that, although we're looking for.
I mean, to give you a sense, Maple Grove is adding on to their community center and it was a hundred and fifteen million.
Hundred and thirty.
Or a hundred and thirty. Yeah, so I mean, um, the, and that's, I mean, that, that's not starting from scratch. They're actually just adding on to what they have.
Well, we definitely know the cost of adding on, building new buildings. Uh, you know, we've been part of that for the last two years, so we totally understand that and, and, and know the importance of, of how challenging it is to either add on, build, and the costs involved with it. It's tremendous. So. I, I'll just reach out and say the same thing. Thank you to everyone that served. Um, like I said, it was a big task, I'm sure, to, to be able to come up with that, but to come back with a consensus like this on such a big building is pretty amazing. And I think some of the big hurdles, um, are all part of that, you know, the parking, obviously the, the building itself needs a lot of work and so. Exciting to see it. Now we just gotta figure out how to do it. So thank you all for, for, for your time and efforts and, and a great outcome. So.
And do we need a, do we want to do a motion?
I think, uh, yeah, the intent would be to have the council formally accept.
Just accept, all we're doing is accepting.
I would just say, accept and adopt the community center.
This, this just says recommend, recommended approval. So you tell me what you want.
Uh, I, I would accept it. Okay.
Accept and approve.
Well, here's what's actually in the packet. It says, recommend city council approval of the Chaska Community Center Master Plan Report and acceptance of the citizen task force's recommendation.
There you go. That's what it says right here. So, I never got that far.
So.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion and I have a motion from Councilmember Wong. Second by Councilmember Hubbard. And this is a recommendation, recommend city council approval of the Chaska Community Center Master Plan Report and acceptance of the citizen task force recommendation. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, full same sign. Got that one done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all of your work. Thank you. Thank you for all of your work.
Run away.
Thanks.
You hang around a little bit longer. Your meeting's in a couple of days.
You can just stick around, you know?
All right, we are to, uh, AE Adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-six, uh, authorizing issuance and sale of fifty-one million, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand lease revenue bond series twenty twenty-four.
Uh, so Mayor and Councilmember, I have in front of me tonight is also something we'll have on the EDA tonight because we're using EDA lease revenue, uh, financing for our public safety building. Uh, but this is financing our total cost of, of the project, including the FF and E. Uh, that's in, uh, included in the, the proj- uh, project. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Noel, uh, who can explain this. And we also have Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly, uh, as our financial advisor who will be helping us put together the sale of debt.
I got that forty-something million included FF.
Forty-five. Bid for the forty-seven point five is a bid for the building loan.
You didn't include the FF in there?
No, that was just the bid for the, the building.
All right. Go ahead, Noel. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to bring before you tonight the issuance of this bond series that is proposed to finance the new public safety facility for police and fire. Um, what we're proposing tonight is to be using lease revenue bonds. This is a similar type of financing that the city has used previously. Examples are this very building. City Hall was financed this way many years ago. The lodge addition at the community center was financed with this type of debt, as well as the curling and event center back in twenty fifteen. Under this arrangement, what happens is the city is not issuing the bonds, but the Chaska EDA will be, the authority actually issued the bonds. What will happen is the, the site itself with the building will be transferred from the city's title to the EDA and that'll secure the EDA's position. The city will then lease that site facility back from the EDA over the term of the bond, which would be thirty years. And it's that lease payment that the city makes every year to the EDA that will be used to pay the debt service back to the bondholders. So it's a little, it's a two-step process, but it does allow us to issue this type of bond and go forward with this financing at this time. We have, uh, with, uh, standard and pores, we have a double A geo rating. Because this type of financing does not have a geo pledge. It only has an annual appropriation that'll be made each of those thirty years. The bond rating for this will be double A minus, which is one notch lower than the typical geo rating. And that's because the, the revenues are still secure, but they're at a greater risk than if it was a straight tax pledge. So these are some of the, uh, nuances that we have to, you know, put in place to make sure that the EDA can finance this project for the city. This type of financing gives us some flexibility in terms of how we were able to structure it and how the project was sized. In your notes, you will see tonight that what we looked at was a total project issuance cost, uh, or total project cost of about fifty-three point four million. This is the contracts that Matt was just talking about. It includes some of the FF and E that was rolled into those original contracts. It also includes a contingency amount. And then some of the other cost of issuance that we have to issue as a part of the debt issuance. That's at about one point nine million dollars. And so altogether, when we take those costs, we are going to fund some of these costs through direct cash contributions. One of those is going to be the billion and a half that is going to be coming from the federal government for the EOC addition. That was through the congressional earmark process that we received. And then there's going to be some additional cash contributions from the, uh, building program levy that we've had in place in the last two years, as well as the utility fund contributions that are funding that cash flow. So that's what gets us to our net, um, total par amount estimated at fifty-one million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, one of the things we typically do when we are selling debt is we would come before you tonight with what would be referred to as a set sale recommendation. And then about a month later, we come back with the actual sales results on the night of a council meeting. We have looked at the market and Michaela's going to go into more detail on this. We did not want to try to compete in the market issuing our date on those planned, um, sale dates in May and June. So what we've selected as the sale date for this date is going to be Monday, the twenty-fourth of June. Therefore, what's before you tonight is a parameters resolution instead of a set sales resolution, which will allow the city to take competitive bids on the twenty-fourth. And as long as the size of the par amount of that bond issue and the proposed interest rate are below the parameters that were established um, in the proposed resolution, we can execute the sales agreement. And then we will bring back the final sales results to console for affirmation at the first meeting in July. So with the total estimated, um, par amount of the bond, about fifty-one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, we're, excuse me, fifty-two million, five hundred thousand, we're going to set our parameter, switch those around, I'm sorry. We're estimating the par at fifty-one million, three hundred and seventy thousand. We're going to set the maximum par amount at fifty-two thousand, five hundred. That gives us that gap. The reason we need that room is because depending on how the bonds are bid, there might be a premium. There might be a discount and we need some room to be able to work with the selected underwriter to size the final bond on the day of sale. The interest rate that we have projected is four point four percent. The parameters resolution says the interest rate should not exceed the five point seven five percent. So with those two parameters approved in the resolution, we'll be able to go forward with the issuance process. We have a rating call scheduled in the standard and pores on June third. And that'll be, their report will be issued prior to the sale date of the twenty-fourth of June. So what you're ta- doing tonight is taking action to authorize the city to transfer the property to the EDA, affirm that the E, request that the EDA issue the bonds and to authorize the city administrator and mayor to sign documents related to the transfer of the property and the issuance of the debt. There will be a similar action later on tonight at the EDA meeting where they will actually then adopt some of the, uh, resolution to actually, um, again, establish these same parameters, issue the debt and enter into the agreements with the trustee, manage the, the debt over the thirty-year term. So if there is any questions, I can answer now. Otherwise I'm going to let Michaela review some of what they're proposing in terms of how this was structured.
Questions for Noel? Noel, you gotta be careful. You can't use the word professionally directed funding.
You are correct.
We'll get in trouble. Here, that's the first time I ever told something to Noel that he goes, yep, I agree.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, Noel did a very good job describing the action before you tonight. Um, the only thing maybe I would add, uh, again, is the action before council tonight is to consider the, the, uh, resolution requesting the EDA issue the bonds and setting certain parameters pursuant to the parameters, uh, resolution. Um, the, just talking about the next key events, then the authority, the EDA would also consider that parameters resolution following tonight's council meeting. Um, it's setting those parameters for the bonds and the, um, establishing a pricing committee. Um, the rating conference, as we said, would be on June third, and that would be to reaffirm the, um, double A minus rating for the EDA lease revenue bonds. June twenty-fourth, um, the competitive, uh, bids would be, uh, received and then they would be, uh, subject to meeting the parameters awarded by the pricing committee. And then the July first meeting, the EDA and the city would ratify the bond sale. Again, the purpose of this timing was to align with both when the bond proceeds would be, um, needed for the, for the project, um, estimated at July seventeenth, but also to look at the, the market and when we think, um, competitive bids would be favorable. Um, quickly on the structure, these are thirty-year bonds. Uh, current interest rate is four point four percent, tax exempt rates. Um, with the thirty-year term, we are looking at the financing, the par amount of the bonds of fifty-one point three seven, four point one million as the upfront, um, financing contributions to finance the fifty-three point five roughly, um, project cost estimate. There is capital in capitalized interest component to fund the first two one twenty-five debt service payments and then followed by, um, twenty-nine, um, annual or, um, sorry, a long night as well, um, equal annual debt service payments, uh, for the remaining twenty-nine years. There is a call provision, uh, within, or ten years. So if current rates, uh, which means that's the first year or after ten years, the bonds could be callable. So if rates, um, uh, are down in the future, um, we would be able to, um, realize, uh, interest rate savings. Um, so again, before you tonight is the consideration of the resolution that would, um, request the EDA, um, actually issue the bonds, um, pursuant to the terms of the parameters resolution. And I'd be happy to ans- answer any other questions that you would have.
Able to secure the bond under the parameters and, uh, as of some unforeseen financial circumstance, the market or something?
I- in the case that i- if, for example, um, the, if the rates are higher or the proceed amount, um, then there would be, the action would come back before, um, council. And I, I think when we're, there's careful consideration of establishing those parameters. So you do have that ability, um, to stay within the, the, within those parameters. So again, looking at the, the biggest thing is I think we've got the refined, um, project cost estimates. So if it's, if the pricing's above that, um, you would have to refine what your project cost amount is. The interest rate, um, that's a big jump over from four point four up to five point seven five. So I, I think the purpose of again, establishing those parameters is that you, the, the competitive bids would fall within, um, what we expect. The other side is we do monitor the market, um, up to the point of the sale. So each kind of each week, as you get closer, we, we understand if there's market changes. We know we're still in a, a volatile market where they're kind of continually going up and down. Um, and if we foresee any concerns from that, we would, um, reconsider.
Uh, which still, this is great, but still doesn't really answer the question of like, what happens if like, let's say, if market just crashes on tanks, right? You know, it's happened before. I mean, I'm not expecting to happen, but it could, right? What happens? I mean, if we're not able to secure that bond, right?
We wouldn't be able to automatically go and take any action without it coming back to council.
Right. So we'd have to come back.
So in essence, it would have to come back to the council for approval.
Right.
What the parameters does is it says that, uh, you guys are authorizing the mayor and myself to do this. Uh, you, you know, you'd have to take that back to council for action.
We'd have to like give a different set of parameters.
Yep. Well, you'd have to actually consider the actual amount at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, one thing I will point out real quickly, um, it's just, you know, maybe a little piece of good news through, through all this is, uh, when we first started doing the estimates of what we thought the debt service payments were going to be, I don't know, when Chris did those, maybe a year ago. I mean, it was a while ago. Um, what we were estimating for, uh, debt service payments was higher than what it is now because the interest rates have come down. Um, so that, that's a good thing. Um, you know, you have no idea what's going to happen to the rest of the building programs. Uh, but it does give us more flexibility if we're going into the future.
Are we, are we limited to say, say our interest is four? And then in five years, it's three point one. We can re.
We can't call for ten years.
Also, it's got to wait ten years.
You gotta wait ten years.
That's, that's what I was trying to remember.
Yeah.
You have a call provision built in. It's two one thirty-five, I think is the first year. So if the rates drop down to a point that makes, and there's an analysis that's done before you do the refunding. But if the rates make sense based on where those are and the bonds are callable, that's a consideration you'd have at that time.
Well, we, we have, these guys evaluate all of our debt on a pretty regular basis. And so, you know, uh, when we have debt that's, that is callable, you know, we will evaluate to see if it makes sense to refinance it.
All right. Questions? Anyone?
Always.
Thank you for, uh,
She doesn't, she doesn't live close to here either.
We can, I get, cause it's late. When you redo city hall, you have, you should make a room for people like her that has sit here all night. They could go sit in a nice, watch TV, do your stuff.
Take a nap.
Instead of sitting in here. Somewhere off, you're just building a room for.
Little sleep man.
Yeah.
You need a green room.
The double is something else at the other time. All right. Let's get her out of here though. Um, so with that, I, I need a, a motion and I'm going to read what it says here. Adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-six, authorizing issuance and sale of fifty-one million, three hundred and seventy thousand lease revenue bond series twenty twenty-four by the Chaska EDA. Is that correct? Okay. So I need a motion for that.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong. All again, but it's, uh, Adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-six, uh, issuing bonds. Um, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Right. Motion carries. We will have an EDA meeting immediately following uh, our meeting and then the EDA has to then approve that. So. All right. With that, we are on the bills. Anyone got a question regarding bills?
Two questions. I'll keep it quick. Um, page three, I'm the item for Aspire Bakery, which I'm guessing was the former Arista Bakery. Uh, there's, uh, item for, it looks like a rebate custom, uh, for twenty-five K and change. What was the rebate for?
That's for energy efficiency improvements they put in and we use our, our SIP dollars to pay for that.
And the second question is page six, just item for Coastwise Fire Guard. And shows a planner review for Costco, but wouldn't our fire marshal be doing that?
Uh, except on major buildings like that where there's a high occupancy, like, like two twelve medical center is another example. Um, there's a pretty, it's a pretty complicated, uh, review process. The project actually pays for it. So it's not like we're paying for it and that. Uh, so basically they'll do the calculations on those major, uh, ones like that.
Thank you very much.
Did you find anything on that parking lot bill?
Yeah, it's wrong. Uh, well, the, I sh- I shouldn't say that. I have, I have to check into, so the question is on the, the old part thirty parking lot. Um, the payments were supposed to stop when the course opened. And Noel, no, that's, I have to have a discussion with them.
Okay.
So the, so what's a.
Paid the bills minus that one.
Well, actually we are, I was going to suggest that we actually pull that one. Uh, because the, the issue, uh, the issue is, is that uh, I think the, what they're interpreting is that they're charging us for January, February and March before the course opened. Uh, the agreement.
Five grand, that's.
That's a third of the, of the payment for the year. I'm going to have a conversation with them. I say we just pull it from, from this, uh,
Make a motion.
Yep.
I think you figured out what it is. It's, 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 build, uh,
We used to pay fifteen thousand dollars a year. Yeah.
Thought we were talking about that. So.
Yeah, I thought we.
Any other questions on bills?
No, but I'll make the motion to pay the bills with the exception of the item for the parking lot use.
If, I have a motion. Second. Second. So I have a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Miss, Councilmember Brock, uh, to pay the bills, uh, and pulling the item for Haley King Gates for parking. Discussion. Bring that all in favor, signify. Ooh, 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 ooh. How about you Paul Roll instead?
Yes, Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes, Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
So, yes. All right. Moves us to other business. Councilmember, uh, Hatfield.
I think probably the only thing to mention, um, or a couple of things, I guess. As we've talked about, we've mentioned a few times that I think most of us, uh, went to the middle schools today, all of us maybe, went to the middle schools and, or the middle school west and talked to their government class, I believe it is.
Civics.
Basically the same thing. Um,
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, thanks. Civics class. Um, Okay. Thanks. Civics class. Um, and got to hear their questions and they asked a lot of good questions. They had, I love they ask hard hitting questions. They tell us when they don't like things. Uh, so it was great and I always enjoy that. I feel like it's been a few years. Either I haven't been invited in a few years or we haven't done it in a few years. One of the two. Um.
Oh.
I mean, like I've done it, but I feel like there was some time, maybe it was COVID, what I'm thinking of.
I think that's probably.
Yeah.
They didn't do it. Yeah.
Um, anyways, there's that. And then, uh, the only other thing is I will not be at the next meeting.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah. We gotta make sure we are.
I always get really nervous when we leave just the guys. I'm just kidding. Anyways, that's all I have to say. Oh, uh, okay. Um, well, funny story. Um, I'll keep it quick. I am doing that one hundred mile challenge to the community center like you walk.
Run one hundred.
Yes. So I've been walking the, the city trails quite a bit the last month or whatever. And, and over in my neighborhood, which is where Sunset Park is, there's kind of a, part of it's kind of gravel, uh, and I, I've, I've always really liked the natural beauty of it. I've gotten emails over the years, like, why isn't this thing paved like the rest of the trails and, and conversated on that. But anyways, the other day I was walking there and it was just like so flat and so smooth. And I was like, wow, this is so amazing. Like this is so flat. Everything looks perfect, like picturesque. So I emailed our public works director and I like compliment him. He's like, oh yeah, good news. It's getting ready to be paved. And so it got paved. So anyways, I come here just to say a local report um, over in that area. For those that, uh, don't know and that wanted that part of the trail paved, it is now paved and it looks gorgeous paved as well. So, um, but anyways, uh, that was my one report. I think, uh, just, um, as Memorial Day, uh, comes up here, there, there is, uh, the Memorial Day, um, service or, is it a service? Yeah, it's a service. I'm sorry. It's late. Uh, and that's this, uh, the Monday.
Twenty seven.
Thank you. And it's at ten AM at Veterans Park. And I believe there's like a little parade before the program. So, um, but I just like to just say like, you know, as people are out enjoying their Memorial Day weekend, just to remember the reason why Memorial Day is what it is. And just to reflect and pay honor to those that gave their life. So, um, I don't really have anything else. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I'll try to make it quick. Um, so T S Chaska actually happened since the last meeting. So it was a great event, um, really well attended. You know, it was a really beautiful day out. So, you know, great, great attendance out there and lots of food trucks, lots of different food and local, you know, local vendors there. So it was great to see that. Um, Chaska History Center has a graveside tales tour, June twenty ninth in Mount Pleasant. Um, so people will be acting out some of the stories that have been told from, um, from, uh, Chaska's history. So a bit of playing the, you know, playing the parts of real Chaska people from, you know, long ago. Um, you already mentioned the Veterans Day Memorial Program on May twenty seventh. And the only last thing I'll mention, uh, for brevity is on May thirtieth, Officer Janky, who is actually with us in the room tonight, is celebrating her retirement. So we.
Up there Julie.
Sorry.
We're loving to appreciate you too. We're just waiting for the mayor.
I was gonna do it night before, and then I slipped my mind, but, uh, wanted to bring you up here, get you on the live TV. This is your last council meeting, right?
Yes. She's coming to hang out. Yeah.
And what a, what a council meeting to be at eleven, eleven. And we still gotta.
Make a wish.
We got another one left, but I just want to say, um, from the council that, uh, thank you for everything you've done. You've been a, it's an amazing, the connections you've created and made and friendships and organizations either joined or formed. The list just goes on and it's, I don't know how to get through them all. And, but I, we needed to publicly at this council meeting, say thank you
Yep.
for, for what you've done. And I know that you've been working hard with Martine to get him up to speed, but he'll never be Julie.
Ah.
He'll, he'll, he just can't. He's gonna, he's got big shoes to fill. And I'm sure that he's going to do a great job, but it's just going to be different.
Yeah.
But, uh, ultimately, thank you. Uh, I think your, your retirement is well deserved. You go a hundred miles an hour all the time. And, uh, sometimes you just gotta take that step back and spend time with family and do the things that you've always put off.
Yeah.
So, um, but thank you very much for everything you've done. It doesn't even seem like it's enough to say thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, you've, uh, you've, you've made a mark and your mark will be here forever.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for your kind words. Um, I have to say it, my career, um, was wonderful. I mean, twenty six years here with the city and, um, I can honestly say I love my job. I love what I do. And this is like, it's just really bittersweet. So, but you haven't got rid of me because I am working on a crime prevention fund, uh, for the police department. So, um, Chaska Crime Prevention Fund, and I'm going to sit on the board as a retired officer. So I'm excited about that. And I'm passionate about, um, crime prevention and, um, our community. So, um, not gone yet, but hope to see you all on the thirtieth. So.
I can tell you, I want to pay it to the Delaware community to.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm thinking, man, I'm doing a great job. And then they had to remind me, well, you're not quite as good as Julie.
Right.
Yeah, I usually have fifty to sixty probably every month at least come to coffee with a cap there. So, yeah, it's been great. Had invites to come and live at some of the buildings here in town. Zen said I could move there now. So I thought, yeah, it's been, it's wonderful. And like I said, it's great to feel, um, like I said, so loved at all these buildings and where I speak and to do all these, um, wonderful things in our community. So it's, it's been wonderful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Trying to get you out of here quickly now. We'll get through the remainder of this. Sorry, Mike. Now you can continue.
No, that was, that was the last one. I was just gonna say that Julie, you know, Julie is one of a kind and one of the best of ways. And you'll, we'll always be, uh, feel be missed here. And, you know, someone else may fill your role, but no one is really ever going to fill your shoes. Thank you, Julie.
Anything else over there?
Yeah. I mean, I think just, how do you like put twenty six years to do that? Like, I don't think people remember, like you were a patrol officer and then you, you know, led explorers. And then you went into community partnership. Like that's so many roles, so many lives touched. Sorry, I would get a hold of them. Julie spent like a mom to me. I've known her since I was nine. So, she stole my mom away from me a few times to travel the world. But very excited. We'll get to go golfing now. It sounds like we're gonna take, you know, she's going to take up some golfing and spend more time with Sally, maybe. Her horse.
Yeah.
Um, and things like that. So just thank you.
I feel like I'm a little, I have five officers that I work with that are white police explorers.
You do have a lot. Yeah.
And I was just at the state conference and I'm at, I, we got a traffic crash. I'm standing there and looking at the trooper that's doing it. And like Katie Delaware, I'm like, is your dad Joe? Which was the trooper that patrol around Chaska when I was on patrol. And she's like, yeah, he retired in twenty twenty. So anyway, it's been great. So. And when we did our little law enforcement, I don't know if it's a luncheon, the first responder luncheon, the guy that interviewed me said, well, how long have you been working for the city? And I said twenty six years and he goes, wow, as long as I've been alive. So there's a laugh. So.
All right. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. I, I echo what's said. I appreciate everything you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
And you're up.
Any other my thoughts now? Uh, I guess I'll just cup, just one, uh, one real thing that I think is cool to share. I spent a lot of time at baseball fields. That's well documented at this point in my life. Uh, and, um.
Let me tell you, there's A D Ds there. No, there is now. That's great.
So, uh, Chaska Classic was great. That's, I talked about that last time, but I just was interesting. So we had a game. Uh, my son had a game at Community. That's our home field, Community Park one. Um, and it was against a community that I think sometimes we maybe joke about, or, you know, some people in the city may aspire to be like, uh, it was Edina. Uh, and the mom, the mom, uh, came and said, wow, this is a really nice field and complex. Um, so take that as you will, right? I mean, and I agree, right? Like community, we have lots of good parks and, and baseball fields. But it's, you know, it's similar to, you know, the comment that was made at the community center. When you're so close to it, you're there all the time and you got practice and you're hustling and bustling with your kids. You, you, you sometimes take that, forget to take that step back and like, this is a really nice complex. So, um, I would have appreciated that comment from any other city, but I just thought it was interesting because sometimes Edina feels like they got the best of the best, or at least they want everyone to think that. So to have that very genuine comment about how nice of a facility, uh, in baseball field and complex that was, was, was super fun to hear. Um.
You know, what you, do you know? I know you're gonna go crazy, but that was a park that a lot was done by the city. The public works groups. We did all fencing. Last spot, the last field was wet. It still probably does, but it used to be like you couldn't walk on it. So we were able to release divert water and so that's the fun part of my memories that I got to be, have a hand in some of those things. I don't even want to say when it was built because Taylor will. Taylor will go crazy.
Did he invent the game of baseball?
Here we go. Here we go. I do it.
I, I kind of asked like, what was the scoreboard? Do they have like pieces of paper they post?
We didn't have scoreboards.
So.
That's.
But, yeah. So just keeping it brief. I will echo that again, being at the middle school was super fun. Um, lots of good questions about the seventh graders. I also have that moment of realization that I'm not prepared to have a middle school son myself next year. And you kind of just see the hustle and bustle of that middle school. But yeah, really good questions. I mean, they, they don't hold back. And sometimes it's like, you just appreciate their blatant honesty in their questions, right? Like, it's like.
Well, there was, they were talking, the guy from Tennessee was talking about who's been to the Chaska Community Center, who's been to the Eden, Eden Prairie, and who's been to the Tennessee one. And like one kid raised their hand and he goes.
I didn't know there was one.
And another one goes, I don't like that one. Yeah, there, there's nothing held back. And I think he used a different word, but I'll use that one.
Oh, that's all I have. Just, uh, just to share that, uh, interesting observation. Again, sometimes when you're in and out and you, you kind of forget the, the beauty that's uh, in front of you because you're just, you're there.
That's, it's always, you take a picture or something and go, wow. Didn't realize it.
And to see, like I said, with the, the classic, to see all those parks filled with people and, and the weather was great because last year Sunday got rained out. So you had perfect weather for the classic. Um, you know, so it was, it was just, it's a fun atmosphere to see people and kids and, and successes and failures and learnings and all those types of things kind of happen on the baseball field. So.
Thank you Nate. At least. Kristoff.
I do. I have two.
What?
Yeah. When it rains.
What is this all about?
So first thing that I'd like to note is that when we, there was a question earlier about the effect of, uh, zoning denial and whether, um, whether an applicant could come back after, um, a certain amount of time or whether it was a restriction. Very common for communities to have, uh, that in their zoning ordinance. If a, if an application is denied, they can't apply, reapply within one year or six months.
That's a zoning.
But usually with the zoning applications, correct. Um, while I was searching, I didn't find what something uh, to that effect in the Chaska zoning ordinance, um, to my knowledge. In the, in the search that I was doing while that was going on, I didn't find one. I'll probably eat my words and make a retraction next week, but, um, I, I, to my knowledge, I don't know if we have a restriction saying that an applicant can't reapply if they have a, a denial. Then, and then the second thing that I wanted to note was that all of the, um, just an update, very seldom that all of my work can, happens in, in, in such a public, uh, place that I can just, uh, yeah, in the, in the public eye. But last week or last, sorry, last, um, last city council meeting, the council approved, um, two agreements to, uh, finalize the acquisitions for the, um, Minnesota Bluffs Regional Trail Project. So all of the, the property rights that the city needed for that project have been acquired, um, all of those. All, all of that, um, they, yeah, the property right acquisitions have been accomplished. So.
Awesome.
Thank you.
That's the trail.
Not easy, is it?
Yeah. Yeah. That's the hard part. Yeah.
Hard part. We don't see that behind the scenes. So thank you for getting that done. Noel, anything else? Matt.
Wolves.
What?
The wolves.
I just heard, yeah, that's all I heard.
I was gonna try to say Nas Reed a few times.
Uh, just, uh, a few things, um, how are we doing on that project that, that Cuskey's doing on the Crick Road? Is that nearing completion?
Yeah, they actually hooked up the sewer. Was it, I think a week ago?
Oh, so it's.
Yeah.
It's on, it's on now.
Yep.
Okay.
He's great.
Good to hear. So that they just probably got to finish up and then put the trailer. That is their project? I mean, they, they probably sub it out obviously. Get the base ready. Okay. Um, I don't know if you've seen the wall on the very road. They rebuilt most of it. Uh, looks pretty nice. They did a nice job. I, I just, I don't know what's going on. It's, it's like they haven't been there for a few days. I, I wasn't there today, but. Uh, what else? I don't know. It seems like we're missing something. But I, I, I'll just add and I don't know if I remember.
Is it possible we missed something?
I said.
I, I as well want to mention Memorial Day that. We gotta remember that it's just not uh, a three day weekend, what the purpose is. There's, there's a wonderful program that's, that's at the Veterans Park. We already said ten o'clock on the twenty sixth.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seventh, yeah. Um, but you know, take that hour, hour and a half out of your weekend and go honor the people that have been serving us and are serving us. So, uh, I, I strongly encourage that. Um, the honor guard also, uh, goes out at seven o'clock in the morning and goes to like nine cemeteries between Carver and Chaska. Uh, so, um, there's there's gonna be a list in the paper. That's right. The paper's gone. So I, I guess I don't know where you'd.
Facebook? I think the Legion has it.
We might want to put it on our Facebook page if someone thinks about that to get out the times that we started East Union and we come back. It's just, it's really East Union, um, St. Nick's. Uh, Mount Hope. Then we go to G A. That's uh, Mount Pleasant. And then St., or then they go to, um, St. John's and we do stop at, at, um, Auburn Manor and just do a honor guard gets out and does a quick sets their flags and, and does a salute. And then we're off to, then we start it now on Pine, no Cedar Street.
Pine Stream.
Pine Street.
Pine?
Yeah, I'm reading it.
Oh. I thought we started.
Outside size.
Okay. All right. We start a pine and then just come down sixty one and then into the park. So. But it, it's a great, they, I don't know who the speaker is. Has anybody said who the main speaker is? Generally they have always found someone that's amazing. So I have a great story to tell. So please, uh, please join us there. Um, I don't have it up now. We got council meetings, the next, so next one is June, name they got, third, third, and then it would be fourteen to seventeen. Um, so we're back on a normal schedule. Work sessions probably at the bottom of them, I think. So. With that, that's it. Um, again, we got an E D A meeting immediately following. So we'll adjourn and go right into the E D A meeting. So with that, motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Okay.
Second by, uh, Councilmember Hatfield. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name sign. We are adjourned and we'll move directly into the E G A meeting. We'll call it the Monday, May twentieth, twenty four, uh, meeting to order at eleven twenty six. Thanks Nate. Um, we'll call that at eleven twenty six. Um, we'll call that at eleven twenty-six. At least we call roll.
Sheriff Hatfield.
Here.
Sheriff Hubbard.
Here.
Sheriff Wong.
Here.
Someone show.
Yes. Thank Kristoff, thanks. Uh, next we will be adopting the agenda, the corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Wong.
Okay.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield.
Commissioner.
All Commissioners, yes, thank you, thank you. Getting late. Uh, so discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Then we have to approve the previous meeting minutes, that's from three eighteen twenty-two four. Again, corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion.
The most.
Motion by Commissioner Hubbard, second by Commissioner Wong. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Uh, next is discussion item, uh, five A, adopt resolution number E D A twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven. Authorizing issuance and sale of fifty-one million, three hundred and seventy lease revenue bonds. Series twenty-four, twenty twenty-four A by the Chaska.
Sir President Commissioners, I want to offer you tonight is a follow-up on what we took action on in the council meeting. In order to authorize the E D A to actually issue this debt, we do have to have you, uh, 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 authorize the issuance and sale of the lease revenue bonds, uh, uh, series two thousand twenty-four A. And we can certainly answer any questions, but it's basically, it's basically just making sure that.
We want Noel to get up and tell us again what we just got told. All right, with that, then I would look for a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven.
So move, second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Draw, second by Commissioner Wong. E D A, E D A twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven authorized issuance and sales of fifty-one uh, three seventy lease revenue bonds. Discussion. Again, we're not just blowing over this, we went through this at our council meeting. This is just, uh, the next step, so that we're following the right direction. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Wong.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hubbard. To adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Post same sign. Night, everyone.